Recording in progress.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. It's April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, and this is a special meeting of the Town Council and the Jones Library Trustees. Chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty five extended through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, the ability of public bodies to meet in a fully remote or hybrid manner. This law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at a meeting location. This meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media Channel nine and live stream. There are twelve counselors present this evening at this time and eleven in the room. There are six, I'm sorry, five Jones Library Trustees present this evening, and all five are in the room. Please be advised that this meeting is being held in person for Town Counselors, Jones Library Trustees, and staff only. All other attendees have been asked to join us virtually. Because of the these special circumstances, in the event of technology issues, with remote connection, the meeting will be continued as soon as connectivity is reestablished. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling on the April fourteenth Special Town Council Meeting to order at six thirty-two. After I get done ready, doing this roll call, I will ask the Chair of the Jones Library Trustees, Austin Surratt, to do the same for the library trustees. I'll call upon each counselor by the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed. At that time, please unmute your mic and say present. This will indicate that we can hear you and you can hear us. Please remember to mute your mic after saying present. Pat DeAngelis?
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier. Yeah.
Present.
Thank you, Anna. Counselor Ette?
Present.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Counselor Hanke?
Present.
Bob Hegner?
Present.
Counselor Lord? Is not here. She will hope to join us later. Pam Rooney?
Here.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Kathy Shane?
Here.
Andy Steinberg?
Present.
Jennifer Taub?
Here.
Alicia Walker?
Here.
Thank you. Austin, would you please call the Jones Trustees together to order and make sure that they can hear you and we can hear them?
Thank you, Lynn. So the meeting of the Jones Library Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Uh, Lee Edwards? Tammy Ewitt? Matt?
Present.
Far?
Here.
And I, uh, right. And Austin Surratt.
Point, pardon me. Eugene Gofredo is online. Can you just hear, confirm that we can hear and hear him?
Gee?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no chat room for this meeting. If counselors have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. And to make a comment or ask a question, please click the raised hand button. There is one specific comment period this evening relevant to the subject of the meeting, meaning the Jones Library Project. I'd like to thank people for all of the many comments that you've sent us over the past week. And we encourage people to continue to do so, either sending them to towncouncil@amherstma.gov or through the general public comment function. The only announcement is that we will have a regular Town Council meeting on April twenty-eighth at six thirty. Has Lauren joined us? Thank you. So we are going to move on to the action item of our agenda, and we're going to start with the opportunity to ask any legal questions. Lauren Goldberg from KP Law is able to join us, but because of a previous engagement, we're having this at the beginning of the meeting. If you have legal questions at this time, please raise your hand if you are from the council or from the trustees.
Lynn, point of order?
Yes.
Can you confirm that the agenda is counselor questions, then public comment, then council discussion?
Yes, I can. Thank you. And then, okay. Yes. Eugene Gofredo?
I just, I, excuse me. I am the spouse of a paid member of the Friend of the Jones, so an advice of legal counsel with the Massachusetts Board of Ethics. I'm going to recuse myself, so I'm going to actually log off of the meeting. So.
Okay. Thank you for telling us that.
Have a good evening.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Okay, so my question, where is Lauren? There's so many people here. Hi, Lauren. My question, am I understanding this time is for me to ask Lauren questions about what I believe is legal generally, or am I, is this something more specific than I'm not understanding?
It's.
Just broad. The order is throwing me off. I'm so used to starting with public comment that I'm like, I don't, okay. So anyway, hi, Lauren. My question is with the MOU that we have signed, what I believe to be true is that that is a binding document that says the town is, binding document that in layman's terms, says the town is on the hook for the thirteen point eight, and that the Jones Library Trustees are obligated to cover the remainder of that, of those dollars from their endowment or the other sources of funding that they receive. Is that true? And is there a scenario in which that MOU would be, could be broken and the town would have to? I understand that when we borrowed the money, we borrowed the full amount, but is there a scenario in which the town could be suddenly hit with a bill for that full amount and the MOU could be broken legally?
Lauren?
Yes, Madam President, through you. So the MOU is a binding agreement between the Jones Library Trustees and the town, and under the agreement, they have pledged to pay X dollars. If we're not, if they were somehow not to do that, the town is on the hook for all of the borrowed money, and if it signs the contract with the MBLC, it will be, and I'm sorry, with the contractor, it will be on the hook for the full project amount. That doesn't mean, just to clarify, that the town couldn't seek to force the Board of Library Trustees to perform. It's a contract. We could, we could pursue that, but ultimately, the town is required to pay if it's, if it obligates itself in that regard.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Are there other questions of a legal nature at this time? Okay, we're going to go on to a, yes, I'm sorry, Kathy, I just saw your hand go up.
My raised hand button didn't work fast enough. Lauren, if, if the project was under contract and it went over forty-six million, which was the authorization, what happens? Who, who's on the hook for that money? How does that get addressed?
Um, Madam, Madam President, through you. So the town can only spend the money that it has appropriated for that purpose, and so when you say if it goes over, there would either need to be an adjustment made, a change order to reduce the size of the project incrementally to address that, but my understanding is that there's approximately three million dollars in contingency built into the budget for the project, and so, you know, that's what the contingency is for, is to address unexpected small overages.
And I guess my question is suppose we go beyond the contingency, you know, the, if, I, I just, I don't know the answer, so that's why I'm asking, you know, it's, it's around an eight percent or eight and a half percent contingency right now on a renovation plus expansion. Is, what happens if that happens?
Madam President, through you.
Please.
In fact, the project is more expensive than, and the town wants to pursue the full scope of the project, it would need to return for further appropriation, but the town can only spend the money that it has appropriated.
Are there other legal questions? Lauren, to the extent that you can stay through the presentation to see if there are any clarifying with that, that's great, but we also understand you have other obligations this evening. So with that, I'm going to go to the Town Manager, who has a PowerPoint presentation that also is complemented by the lengthy response to all of the questions.
Thank you, Lynn. So we have, as Lynn mentioned, we provided detailed responses to the questions that you, the Town Council, have asked of us. This document, plus the supporting documents that are in the packet, are there for you to review and for ever any member of the public to look at. As you can tell from the answers, this project is complicated, as any multimillion dollar construction project is. I provide, in this PowerPoint, I provide a quick summary of the main points from our detailed explanation, and our staff is here to provide additional answers to any follow-up questions that you may have. I want to thank Library Director Sharon Sherry, Capital Project Coordinator Bob Parent, Finance Director Melissa Zawicki, and Clerk of the Council Athena Akeef, who all contributed mightily to pulling this information together over the weekend. I was in touch with everyone over the weekend at different times, so I really thank them for dedicating time this weekend to do that. So next slide. And just so you know, this is about, I think it's about five or six slides. It's not a lot. So the first group of questions were around, is this project within the appropriation approved by the Town Council? And people are saying there's a lot going on in the world with tariffs and other uncertainties, and sort of to Counselor Shane's question, like, how do we know that we will stay within budget? So the first question was, is the bid that the general contractor gave to the town still valid? So we went to the general contractor. He checked with his subcontractors, and all confirmed their bid prices except for two, the plumbing and the metal windows. In that situation, the town goes to the second lowest bidder to offer the contract. With these two exceptions, the general contractor said, as of Friday, that they are holding their bid price and are ready to move forward. We have other costs that we will know short, about shortly, including what it will cost to lease temporary space and what it will cost to move material into the temporary space. We'll look at these, we'll lock these contracts in once we have a signed contract with the general contractor. And these have allowances in our overall budget to allow for these to spend, that those spends do not come out of the contingency. And there's one project, one part of the project, that project that will be rebid, which is the roof, which will happen later in the spring. So in short, the project is within the budget, maintains a contingency of eight point five percent. And I, if there, if we go above the, we cannot go above the forty-six point one million dollars that the town has, that the Town Council has appropriated. I can't sign a contract that allows that. I can't sign a change order that allows that. The accountant will not spend a, send a check if, if we exceed that forty-six point one million. The only way to go above the forty-six point one million is if the Town Council appropriates additional funds for this project. Next slide. So a second set of questions was all about the federal grants, and we all know what's going on in the world, and we worry about our federal grants, and we worry about our federal grants, and our fundraisers worry about the federal grants. And these are two million dollar grants, one from HUD and one from an NEH. And again, we have been staying in close contact with the staff of these two agencies, and we have had conversations with both of them as late as last week, and both are still active, and the town has received no correspondence to the contrary. However, until we get signed agreements, I don't like to really count grants, so, you know, let's, until we don't count our chickens till they're hatched, so we hope that these two grants will be hatched. But I also want to note that this project's not contingent on these two grants. They're sizable and important, for sure, and people worked hard to get them, especially Congress and McGovern, but I do, and we hope that they will come through, and so far, we've been receiving really positive information, but there could be situations in which we lose one or the other or both, and that, that again, is on the trustees' side of the ledger. Next slide. So the next questions were about the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, which we call MBL, MBLC grant, and that they have made significant grants to the town. They initially started with a thirteen point eight million dollar grant and then supplemented it with a one point seven million dollar grant facilitated by our state senator and our state representative, which we really appreciate. So the MBLC continues to support the project. They are well aware of where we are in this, in this process. They have already delivered a check, as showed on the slide, for two point seven seven four million dollars. And they are prepared to make two additional payments before the end of the fiscal year of about five point five billion dollars. They are, they have money allocated for this project by fiscal year, so they've given us money, so that's how this is coming out year by year, so the two payments in June, by June thirtieth, will account for the FY twenty-five payments. And we will use these funds that they are giving us in the early stages of the project. Next slide. So this chart shows the overall status of funding for the project. So I just want to summarize it for people who might not look at this on a daily basis like many of us do. So the first four lines are secured and committed, including the town's fifteen point eight million dollar share. So the, the first line is the town's local share, which is our taxpayers. The next is a CPA money, which is again taxpayers, but it's a million dollars that the CPA Committee and the council have, have approved for this project. The Mass Board of Library Commissioners, which I just talked about, is thirteen point eight million dollars, and then the second grant from the MBLC was the pandemic escalation increase was one point six nine four million dollars. The next four lines include, include the grants that I talked about earlier that have been awarded, and some smaller grants from the, from the state that we have, that the Friends of the Jones have secured. And then there, the remainder shows the other sources. The Friends of the Jones Library have secured ten million dollars in pledges and gifts as of April one, two thousand twenty-five. Of this two point five billion roughly has been received as gifts, and there's still seven million dollars to raise by the trustees, and the Friends or the trustees can comment on the status of their fundraising effort if they so choose. Excellent. So one of the questions that was raised by the council was, already came up, which is, how do we know the trustees are going to meet their, their side of the bargain? They've promised to raise a lot of money, thirteen point eight million dollars. They say they've, they've already committed, received commitments of six point five, and how do we know? What are the assurances? And the town attorney has responded to that. We have a written agreement with the Board of Library Trustees that assures us that they will meet their side of the bargain, and they have pledged their endowment to ensure that, and there is legal language in the memorandum of agreement that allow, that gives the town access to that endowment if it need, if we need to go through a legal process. I don't think we will need to, because I think as fellow elected officials for the council with the trustees, they're committed to this project. So when, when the question is, how do you know they have nine million dollars in the bank that is their endowment, that they have pledged to support the project? The, and, and there's a very detailed document that the trustee's prepared that is in the packet as well, it's called the assurances, which really gives tremendous detail about their, 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 the endowment, how it's been spent over the years, how they anticipate it will be spent over the next ten or twenty years, and all the steps that they are taking to ensure the funds are there for this project. And we hear a lot of questions, well, what about my taxes? Will they go up? Your, people's taxes do not go up because of this project. The, the costs of this project have, has always been incorporated into the town's overall budget. The only way taxes would go up is if the Town Council decided to put a debt exclusion override on the ballot, and the voters agreed to tax themselves more. I have not heard counselors really discuss this as an option, so I don't think that's a, that's probably being discussed at this point in time. So what we have looked at is including this, these funds for this project into the capital plan for the town over the next twenty years. So other counselors are saying, well, what if we wanted to rescind or reduce the borrowing? Well, what would that do? So plain and simple, it would stop the project. It would bring a halt to the project because the funds would not be authorized for us to, to sign additional contracts. Secondly, we would need to repay the MBLC, because remember, they gave us the two point seven seven four billion dollars in advance, which we've been utilizing, because, so we have to return those funds, plus any interest that it, it would have earned during the time that we have had that, those funds. And then we would pivot and move towards, we'd work with the trustees and seek to work with them to move on a repair-only option. And talking to our Capital Projects Coordinator, he estimates that a, a planning for a repair-only option would take anywhere from six to eighteen months and could cost anywhere from five hundred thousand to a million dollars. And that would be to get a plan together so we know what, what we're doing, when we're doing it, how we're going to fund it. Then the project would necessarily be delayed for a substantial period of time. Staff estimate that the repair-only option would cost more than the town's current commitment to the Jones Library Project, and these funds are based on the estimates from eight years ago that are just inflated, so those numbers would have to be refined pretty substantially. Slide. So, you know, I have looked at this project many ways, and I just do note that the delays in the project have been significant and had a, has significantly negative impact on moving this project forward. I was asked, how do you decide if this project should go forward or not? So first, I look to see if this is a priority for the town's elected officials, the Town Council and the Library Trustees. The answer is unambiguously yes. In fact, when I interviewed for this job nine years ago, one of the questions I was asked by the search committee was whether I supported libraries or not. It, it was seen as one of the four major capital projects that we needed to make progress on, and I think it's still, and it is still one of those four project. It has been a priority for the town for well before I got here, for over a decade. Second, is the project for the, is the budget for the project within the appropriation voted by the Town Council? And again, the answer is yes. The total project cost is projected to be within the forty-six point one million dollars appropriation approved by the Town Council. We can't spend more than that without additional funds provided by the Town Council, so everything that is, is part of this project that the town is spending has to be incorporated into this, into the forty-six point one million. And just, you know, just to be clear, we cannot spend a penny more about, with what the Town Council has appropriated. Third, the question, my criteria for decision-making on this is, is the project fiscally sound? So when I look at this investment, the town will be making a significant investment in one of its largest buildings in the center of our downtown, and there's a lot of reasons, and you every here heard the reasons why this project is important or why it shouldn't be done, but looking at it, the tax, town taxpayers will be paying about one-third of the cost, in essence, getting two dollars for every dollar the town taxpayer spend. In my mind, that is fiscally prudent. Leveraging tens of million dollars of non-taxpayer funds for this public building is fiscally prudent. Are there risks? Of course there are. There always are. There's risks in every project. There are risks, we, you know, at, at the, at the school building when we move forward on that. Further delays, we know, will most likely escalate the cost, but this project, I have to say, has been one of the most scrutinized building projects in the town's history. We know a lot about this building, but we don't know everything, so there could be surprises that we uncover. In closing, I just feel like, from my perspective, it's time to move forward. If we don't, the town will forfeit over thirty million dollars in grants and non-Town funding. It will delay much-needed improvements to a major, one of the biggest buildings that the town owns, and it will move into a repair-only approach with unknown costs. And one last thing, as you consider this, I ask you to take into account the many intangibles that are on the table, and you have, many of you have articulated what these are. These are speculative, but they are things that you might take into consideration as you consider what you want, what action you want to take tonight. Rejecting these grants will have ramifications that we don't even know. Our, our town's reputation is, is, is well-known, and this puts much of our good reputation at risk. Our state and federal elected leaders use their political capital to secure millions of dollars of funding, both at the state to secure millions of dollars of funding, both at the state and at the federal level. And there, there's a matter of trust with our elected leaders at that level. Town staff, and I, our town staff had put eons, lots of time and effort into this, thousands of hours to a project that will be deemed to have been not needed and unimportant. While all these things can be managed, the negative consequences are real. And so I'm here. So in sum, this project is within budget and fiscally prudent. And we welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Paul. Now is the time for councillors and trustees to ask clarifying questions at this time. After that, we will move to public comment. Then we will have a discussion and move to motions. Are there questions? Pam Rooney.
Thank you. This is actually a question for the trustees because they're here tonight. We've talked about the, the risk of raising money, but, but the nuts and bolts of this are that it costs money to raise money. And in June, the library took on over $500,000 to pay for, pay for the cost-cutting design elements. There are fundraisers who get paid for raising money. And then there are loans for any, any, to any bank that you end up borrowing money from. Has the library added all these numbers up and understood what the total is that needs to be raised? And has that been made clear to people? We talk about $14 million, but, but then there's the 500. Then there's the, the cost to hire consultants. What is your total amount that you need to raise?
I'm going to direct the question to the chair trustees, and he may decide, he or someone else can answer.
Well, I want to start by being clear about one thing. The cost for the fundraising effort, the Jones Library, in comparison with the cost of fundraising for any other comparable capital campaign is minimal. That's not an opinion, that is a fact. We've looked at our budget. The library director has looked carefully at our budget. Budget committee has looked carefully at our budget. And we have concluded that we can afford this project. We can afford it. We, we all have to remember that any cost that's going to come out of the endowment is not going to come out tomorrow. It's going to come out over time. And we are confident that we can manage those costs if we have to draw down from the endowment. Something else to note. The board of trustees of the library has been extremely cautious for a very long period of time with its draw rate. Before I joined the board, the draw rate was substantially higher than it is now. So by taking a reduced draw rate, we've allowed the endowment to grow. Again, if you look at endowment draw rates at other places, at other institutions, institution of higher education in the town of Amherst, their draw rates typically vary. They go from about 4% to 6.5%. So we're at a very low rate right now. And because of that, we've enabled the endowment to grow in such a way that we can finance this project. Now, if we have to turn over all $9 million, that's a different story. But no one anticipates that. No one thinks that will happen. As to what banks will charge, what their interest rates are, we can't say that. We don't know. Because at what point are we going to be borrowing? And what will the situation be? So I think those are very good questions. But I think everybody on this side is confident that under any scenario that we can imagine, that we can afford to do what we pledged to do.
Is there any follow-up, Pam?
Yes, thank you. So I, I understand and recognize that everyone in the trustees works very hard for this project. What goes through my head is that it's a little bit like a small business with a good endowment. And that as we, as we look to make up almost as much from the trustees as the town itself is committing, this is a large number. And as, as someone who has put their name on the line for paying for the project, I want to make sure that I feel comfortable in this total cost is, has in fact been projected and anticipated and is ready to be covered because we have made this commitment to the, to the taxpayers of Amherst.
So, Councilor Rooney, I really appreciate what you, what you said. And I really appreciate your concern. And I just want to follow with one little way in which you described it. We are not committed to the project. We are committed to the well-being of the library and to the town of Amherst. That's what our commitment is. We believe, I believe, that the right way to discharge that commitment is to move forward with the renovation and expansion. Why do I believe it? I believe it because we've been studying this for more than a decade. I believe it because in addition to the financial picture, I think about the people. I think about the staff in the library. I care about economic justice. Those people are not wealthy. They're working in dreadful conditions, unsafe conditions. I care about people who don't have homes, who come to our library and it is sustenance for them. I care about immigrants in this community who come to the library to be protected and taught and to become citizens. The last thing I would say is the following. Now is the time, more than ever, to stand up for libraries. Now is the time to say, the library in this town needs to be adequate to the needs of its residents. The building we have is not.
Pam, were there any other follow-ups? Okay, Kathy?
I'd make a somewhat more specific question. And I'd like to start by saying, we love the library and we're major users of it. If we had before us a proposal to repair and renovate, we would have, my family would have given generously to that. And if you walk around Jones, you could see it needs it. It sorely needed it. And I think you have plenty of space. So we're not, I know we're not starting at that point. I probably wouldn't, would have started, started with the grant application in the first place. I inherited it as a councillor. So I just want to talk about the financing right now, not debate the merits of a public library, which I think all of us would agree are huge for our society, for our community. How much, if we sign the contract, how much will you be able to transfer within a week or a month of the current donations that you have? Or I understand that you've committed the Woodbury Fund. How much would be transferred to the town at the point we're taking on the debt? It's question number one, in dollars. Question number two is the final payments from you all are due within a couple of years under the MOU. If you are still in the $7 million, and let's just hope you get the two big federal grants, so it's only seven rather than nine, how much of the endowment would you be able to shift over to the town without hurting operating costs? And do you have any assurances? Have you been able to get any assurances from a bank or a lender that you could mortgage the library to raise the rest? Because I don't think with a $9 million endowment, you can take seven and still support operating. So I wouldn't want to do that as a fiduciary. So it's what share of the endowment could move over? Because I'm looking at how long the town might have to wait, or if it has to wait at all, what your plan is to transfer the money to, to honor the timing, in dollars.
Again, I'm going to go to Austin.
I'm going to ask Kent and Ginny to talk to the first question, and then I'm going to ask Nat to talk to the second question.
Okay.
The question assumes, well, let's put it this way. At the moment, the balance to be raised is $7 million. If you, we cover the expenses that we expect to very possibly incur, that might rise as high as $8 million. The endowment is sufficient to cover that now. We wouldn't want to do that, but, but covering it now means that we would raise nothing between now and the time when the payments are due. That is, we would raise nothing over the next three years. The obligation with the town, the memorandum of agreement is, has been from the beginning because that's the way fundraising had to be, that our, our commitment is to come up with the final payments to the contractors when the, when the job is done. And that gives us two or three years. Over the last two or three years, we've raised almost most of what we've already raised. If we raise a similar amount again, we'll easily cover it.
Can I just ask the first, because I had the two-part. The first, the $7 million is after what you have is your commitments from various donations. So I'm asking how much of those commitments are, can be converted to cash and transferred, I'll call it day one, but, you know, within the signing? Because I understand the seven is still aspirational and that you have a couple of years to get to the seven. But I'm talking about what we have seen as a pledge in either in cash or not. And my understanding is you were planning on transferring the Woodbury Fund once this started. So I just would like some sense of what comes over. We have what we get from the library commission? What we get from Amherst College? What we hope we get from the federal? What, what would the town expect to get at the very beginning while we wait for the rest of the, rest of it?
So in your packet, there is a chart explaining where we are in terms of the gift intentions versus gifts that have already been received. When we've looked at the schedule over time, it really depends on the donor. So for instance, the HUD funds would come out once expended. The NEH funds, and our staff are still working as of last week, would be on a grant schedule. For each of the individual donors, some people intend to pay upfront. Others have spread their pledges out over the course of three years. And the same is true with our local institutional donors. So for instance, Greenfield Savings Bank has pledged $30,000 over three years. They played, paid 10 of that last year, and they're scheduled to do so in, in the coming two years. And that's true for Florence and Greenfield Cooperative and, and Peoples and the other banks that were very grateful for their support. Looking at the aggregate numbers by what we know from donors, we would expect, once the contract is signed and there are shovels in the ground, that we would, pledges would be roughly 900,000 coming in in 2025, 629 in 2026, 386 in 2027, and 110 in 2028. That's of the current pledge balance by the schedule that we currently have. Also want to point out that that schedule, in some cases, is based on pledges that were made three years ago and that people are sitting on because it is our ethical obligation to return funds if this project doesn't proceed. So that is where we currently stand, based on what we can best forecast. I will also say for expenses, that the expenses we're looking at for fundraising are covered by the friends. They don't come out of the trustee's budget or the endowment. We are projecting approximately $125,000 a year. And that covers professional staff, the consultants, the materials, the financial and bookkeeping, the software and other office expenses. And when you total that, that is approximately 8% of the friends and trustees' share, or 2% of the entire project shore. And when you look at the industry for fundraising, the, the rule of thumb is 10% for capital, of capital campaigns should be for, towards fundraising. So we are well below that average.
Yes, I would just add, remind the councillors and everybody that the Friends have already turned over $1.6 million. That's in addition to what we've just been projecting. You have that money already.
Sure. So the next question was about the endowment and use of the--
Make sure the mic is on.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
To get this close, and I'll continue to hold it down. So the model that we've used for the endowment is in the materials for tonight. And so essentially, what we're modeling is that there will be about 4.3 million after all of the fundraising during the time of this project that will need to come out of the endowment until further fundraising can be done to make up for that. So we've already transferred $4.5 million of the endowment to a money market fund without risk so that it's available at any time for this project and not subject to market risk as we've seen in the first part of this month. So that money is available. And our modeling after that is that the committee would continue to raise about $500,000 annually. And that would go back into the endowment. And during that time, we would continue to draw from the endowment. The model shows $250,000 a year coming out of the endowment for the library and increasing at an inflation rate. And that would continue on. And so there would be a time in a few years when our draw rate would be above 5%. But as time goes on and more fundraising is done and the endowment is replenished, that would then go down back to 4%. So that has been modeled out. Clearly, it's subject to a lot of assumptions about, about the fundraising, about market returns and so forth. But that's the best information we have. And at this point, I think it's safe to say that these are things that we can work on. If circumstances change, if the fundraising or anything changes, these are things that we can work on. But we do have a plan. We have a model. We do believe that the endowment is sufficient for this project without compromising the operations of the library.
Kathy, was there anything following up?
No, I, I got answers, thanks.
Thank you. Jennifer Chubb.
Yes, I have a question for the trustees, excuse me, and one for Paul. So I guess to the trustees, and it's a response to some of the information that Ginny just provided. So you listed roughly, if I'm adding it correctly, about $1.9 million that you expect to come in, you know, between 2025 and 2028. You had said 900. And these are pledges that have been made that, once a contract is signed, they would start, they would convert to cash donations that would be in hand for the campaign. Now, is that 1.9 million that you expect to come in between 2025 and 2028 part of the $4.881 million that is listed as secured in the project funding update that we received from the library director last week? That I think Paul just, he might have shown it, that Paul showed, put up on the slide. So my question is, is that 1.9 million part of the 4.8 million listed in the fundraising update as secured? Okay, so then that would basically still mean that there's, so the other, so what is the other 2.8 roughly in secured that's not part of those pledges?
So the numbers that I just gave, according to my spreadsheet, total up to $2,630,000, so little over 2. That, that is from individual donors and some corporate donors. So that does not include the federal funds or the other state funds that are out there. And these, some of our donors may pay sooner. It does not include other additional fundraising. But in your breakout, we have the corporate donations separate from the community campaign.
So the community campaign, though, says 4.8 million on that update. So the community campaign, though, says 4.8 million on that update. That's listed as secured, separate from the 6.9.
Yes, from other sources. Right. The best way to look at this is the monthly report that, often monthly, not every month, that we prepare for the trustees. Oh, yes, I think you do have a, I think you do have a copy of it. And it shows that the $5 million in government grants is expected. And Ginny's gone over that. It's NEH, that's the, what are all those considered HUD?
That's different. It says additional funding sources, capital campaign, 4.88, you know, okay.
That doesn't include those government grants.
Right.
That includes, yes.
So I was assuming that was all, most of it was pledges, but you're saying
No, that's why I'm referring to the report to the trustees. Of that 4.8, 2.38 has already been given.
Okay.
We have that in cash. A million six has been given to the town. We have a large account at Vanguard, and then we've used some for expenses. So the pledge balance remaining is about 2.5 million. And at some point, if you'd like, I can tell you that within the last 48 hours, I contacted 17 of the of our donors with the largest pledge balances. And without exception, I was only able to reach 16 of them. One of them I couldn't find. But of those 16, none of them are deterred by the economic circumstances of today. They still support the project. Yes.
Thank you. And then, thank you. Mike.
And that represents about 2.2 million of that 2.5 million total pledge balance.
Wow. You know, when I saw that, I was just from the beginning wondering what that 4.8 was. Paul, I did want to ask, so the, at the point, the message, you know, was reiterated by you and the town council, by Lauren Goldberg, that we cannot spend more than has been appropriated, the 46.1 million. But if the cost, you know, these are chaotic economic times with tariffs, with the cost of materials and labor, and you don't know what you're going to find once you start the project, and we don't have a particularly large contingency as a percentage. So what happens if the cost goes over? I mean, we're not going to stop the project midstream. So who would be responsible for that overage?
So I'll look to Bob Parent if he wants to weigh in on this. But basically, I cannot sign a contract that exceeds the appropriation we have. In order for us to come, give, to sign a contract, the town accountant has to sign it, I have to sign it, and the town accountant has to say there are funds available. So if the funds aren't there, they aren't there. I don't sign change orders that would increase the cost. The only way a contractor can ask for more money is by change, is requesting change orders. So that's gone through, we're doing that with the school project right now. There's weekly meetings. If they have a change order, they bring it in. Bob looks at it. And if we have the money to do it, we can approve it or not approve it. Bob, is there, you want to expand on that?
Certainly. As you mentioned, you know, key to this is keeping an eye on things. As like the school project, I would have expected to be meeting weekly on the Jones Library Project and watching expenditures week by week. And, you know, there could be a point where a tough decision needs to get made somewhere along the way to pull back on something. I don't have, no, I'm not even going to guess what that might be. But unless the town was willing to appropriate any more funds, which I think would be unlikely, there might have to be some challenging, challenging decisions made to make certain we don't spend a dime more than has been appropriated. I'm getting, I'm not going to speculate what that might be and when it might be. But the key to making certain that that happens is just pay attention to it day by day, week by week, month by month.
Thank you. Counselor Ette.
So I've not been in a project of this size, so, and it's on education. With regard to something like this kind of project, how do option Bs factor in? Because we have the project going forward, but in a way, we also had to think about a repair on the option. So my question is, how do you balance looking at the project that you want with the possibility that you may pivot to some other alternative project like an option B?
So when you say option B, you mean the repair only option?
Yes, like
So that decision was made some time ago, when we decided to move forward with the grant from the MBLC, and the trustee has said, and we will raise funds to it, and the council approved this project. If the council says, we don't want this project anymore, and you rescind the authorization to spend money on it, then we would be, we would look into option B, which is the repair option. But right now, there's only one option that we're pursuing, because it's the one project, it's the one option that the council has approved.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Kathy?
My question now is of you, Paul. If, I think I heard accurately, so Ginny and Kent, you should just correct me if I didn't hear right. For the next, let's just assume we're starting in 2025 soon, end of April, May, and we go out for some amount of the 46 million. It sounds like the 7 million and potentially another 2 million, we will be covering as a town for two to three years. The way Ginny described, the the individual donors, that we get 900,000, then we get another 600. So we're not, even though there's a commitment of four plus, we're not getting four at the beginning. So I'm just saying, let's say it's two is rolling in. Have we computed what carrying that cost is to us? I think we were talking about short term bands for that, that would go out for the 15.8 with a long term note. But short term in the, I'm just going to do it in the $9 million range with the seven plus two. I know the two is the iffy one, like, what exactly is that number? Maybe every donor will say, I want to pay on day one, you know, who pledged, but let's say half of them do. So have we, have we put that through some kind of, and I'm asking this, Lynn, because we did it when we voted in 2023. We had a, what might that look like? And we had a column called the short term notes that were bridging the gap before the trustees' full share came to us, which is why I'm pushing on when the trustees, could they transfer more money sooner? Because the sooner we get it, the less the town is paying.
So the fundamentals are not that much different than when what the calculation we did then. And just so you know, it's sort of like the the school project. Money comes in from, and the town borrows money to pay the bills, but there's an inflow and an outflow. And we borrow just the amount of money that we need, sometimes at short term, to get to a larger borrowing. And we also, the accountant and the finance director sort of measures the market, when's a good time to go out to bid, all those types of things. So, you know, the, you know, assuming this project moves forward, we will recalculate everything again. But basically, the fundamental numbers are about the same as they were when we looked at this last. There hasn't been a lot of change.
I want to actually suggest that there is one correction. And that is, back when we did that cash flow, we did not have the pledge from MBLC to give us two years payment in advance. We only had one year coming in. And this time, by the end of June, there will be two years payment coming in, which gives us a cash advantage. And if it hasn't changed very much, or if it changes toward the better, Lynn, I'm just looking at the most recent estimates, when I'm sitting on JCPC of potential debt. I've never seen that other number be there. There's been a small number. No, we had a number, and that number has never been there in terms of the short term band. There is a short term band number, but it doesn't look like it's as big as what we were told in 2023. So I've just seen the long term debt number, not the other. So I'm just asking for our own capital accounts.
Sure.
Because we are up against such a hard place on having enough money for roads and everything else, that I'd like to know that we are, have an accounting system that tells us how hard a place we're up against in terms of commitments.
Yeah, we can do that for you.
Can I just ask, are there any other questions? I have questions. But are there any other questions of legal counsel? If not, I'd like to suggest that Lauren could be gone, in case we send up a flare, Lauren, later on. Okay? Enjoy your evening. Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. My question is for Bob Parent, if I may, Paul. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about a repair option versus a repair and renovation option. As you looked at the study eight years ago, and then the study that was, and the, if you will, almost update, but also study that was done by Kuhn Riddle, can you clarify, was that a repair option only, or a repair and renovation option?
I believe that was strictly a repair option.
Okay. And when you, I noticed that in the
Actually, let me correct that. It was repair and create an accessible library at that point. I believe that was a significant piece of what Kuhn Riddle had looked at, given that the library currently lacks accessibility in many areas.
Okay. And then I also noticed that in the response to the questions, at the time that that study was done, there were two unknowns. Could you explain what those are and why they would change the cost?
Certainly. One is codes, general building codes, as an example. We're actually coming to the end of the code cycle right now on the ninth version of the building code, as of July 1 of this year. The 10th version of the building code will be adopted, and that by itself will force changes in this project if we don't get a building permit applied for prior to June 30. So that's, that's part of the reason to keep this thing moving, is so we don't have to go backwards and look at redesign to upgrade the design to meet a new building code. In addition to that, and there have been building code updates since 2016, when Western builders first looked at the repair options. The other piece of the energy codes, and as you know, the statewide, there was the statewide stretch code that was adopted, that changed things significantly. And then the town of Amherst decided to go with the opt-in energy code, which then placed further requirements in projects like this. And neither one of those are factored into the work that began in 2016, and Kuhn Riddle pulled together and priced in 2020. The other big piece is the detailed hazardous material testing, primarily asbestos testing, and really determining where in the building there is asbestos. And there, there is in the roof, for instance, in the concrete material underneath the slate. By doing some exploratory work, we discovered that, in fact, the, you know, the determination of trying to make the library fireproof meant that asbestos, at that point, was something that was believed to be a benefit, and it was put in pretty much every piece of the library that it could be put into. It's in the building walls. It's currently encapsulated by the coatings that are in the building walls. But as soon as you open up the building walls, you then expose the asbestos, then you need to deal with it. So that, none of that testing, detailed testing was available in 2016 and 2020. It is available now. And it, both of those items, both the code upgrades as well as the hazardous material items are things that'll clearly have a major impact on, on the numbers that were pulled together back in 2020.
But are those numbers, are those issues included in the bid for the renovation in addition?
Yes, they are. Again, providing we can apply for a building permit before June 30 of this year, we will still be reviewed under the current building code. The 10th edition of the building code won't kick in until July 1.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to Pam Rooney.
Thanks. Appreciate the the conversation about Plan B, and in this case, trying to drive a comparison between Plan B and and the full renovation. I would like to make a note that the Plan B, the Kuhn Riddle, and the, and the cost estimates that were done back in 2016 are for an extensive rehab and renovation of the library. I don't know that anyone is expecting, if we go to a Plan B, that we would address each and every one of those needs. And clearly, if if we wanted to have everything up to speed, yes, we would, we would address every one of the Kuhn Riddle and Western Builder items. But I think what I personally would expect is that we would address the the primary concerns and the primary need to the building to keep it watertight and and habitable. And that would be a far smaller percentage of the elements from the Kuhn Riddle plan. We have similar buildings in town, such as the DPW, which has leaking roofs and mold. I want to make sure that we address those as well in our town operating budgets. So when we, I don't think if we went to a Plan B, we would do all the bells and whistles that Kuhn Riddle included. It would be a very pared down, very focused Plan B. It would not cost the same as what was projected.
Are there other questions for anybody at this time?
Lynn, may I just say?
Yes, please.
So bells and whistles are in the eyes of the beholder. The Kuhn Riddle is not for a substantial renovation of the library. It's for a repair. The only thing that the Kuhn Riddle contemplated, as you know, is that once you're in there repairing, you have to make it accessible. So the problems of the library that we are trying to address, space needs, rearranging space so that's safe, none of that's contemplated by the Kuhn Riddle estimate. The second thing to say is that some of the needs of the building are emergent. So the council rescinds the borrowing authorization. I think the trustees will be in tomorrow with a request to do something about the atrium. That's probably $3.5 million. So some of the repair needs of the library, we can't wait for. The HVAC system, as you know, is held together by bubble gum. So yes, you're right. If you do a repair option, you don't have to do it to all the points. Alas, as you also know, the more you defer the repair, the more it needs repaired, the more expensive the repair becomes. So that's why we have looked at all this, and concluded that the fiscally prudent thing to do is to repair, renovate, and expand the library.
Thank you. Anna?
So a couple of questions and a couple of comments. The, I had looked a while ago and had looked through the Kuhn Riddle report pretty closely and pulled the numbers for what some residents had written and suggesting they believed to be the priority, priority fixes. I want to first caveat this by saying I took issue with the entire premise that someone who is not a certified engineer or builder and is not having access to the library in the way that a certified engineer, builder, person in that industry would, that they can clearly articulate what those priority needs are. However, when I just did the math and calculated for even the low end of inflation, it kicked us above the point where the ADA requirement is triggered. And I don't believe that meeting ADA requirements is a bell or a whistle. That feels like something we should be doing. So I would like to ask a couple of questions, and I understand if you don't have the answers. But I want to confirm what that cost threshold is to not, to trigger ADA or to not trigger ADA. I'd like to hope that phasing would not be intentionally kept below that threshold. That feels ethically not great. And then that's question one. Question two is, do you have any idea, if folks have been talking about the idea of phasing, what the added costs are to stop and start the phases, like has been suggested? And then third, my understanding is that some of the the recent discoveries, such as the asbestos study, have made certain phasing options obsolete. And I'd like to seek confirmation on that. So three questions. First, cost of the ADA threshold. Second, cost to stop and start. And that one, I would understand if you don't have. And three, is the phasing even possible in the way that it's been articulated in the past due to the recent discoveries about the asbestos needs?
Paul?
I, I can read what I know, and, but Bob Parent may know more, so.
But that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board issued the regulations of 521 CMR. Yeah. The Massachusetts Architectural Access Board issued the regulations of 521 CMR, which this is in the Kuhn Riddle report, which is part of the Massachusetts State Building Code. Again, this is the, this is when this was written. The code states regarding existing building renovations or additions, quote, "If the work performed, including the exempted work, amounts to 30% or more of the full and fair cash value of the building, the entire building is required to comply with 521 CMR," close quote. The Jones Library Building in 2020 was assessed at $19,196,000 and 30% of that value is $5,758,800. Bob, is that your understanding of how it'd be calculated?
Could you repeat that number a little slower?
Sure. I'm sorry. $5,758,800.
You validated my math. Thank you.
That's my general understanding as well. Obviously, the building commissioner is the expert in that area and he would be the one that would make the determination, but I do believe the number is 30%. It is a, as I understand it, a five-year look back. So you can't phase projects and keep each piece of the project under that threshold because as soon as you do the second phase, you have to take a look at the value of that phase plus the value of the preceding phases. And it does sound like very quickly we would trigger that threshold.
Bob, that is incredibly helpful information. Thank you.
Okay. Did you get all of your three?
I'm not really, I don't think that anyone will, here will have an answer to the second one about starting and stopping phasing, but honestly, Bob, you kind of answered it with the fact that the ADA law doesn't start over with each part of the phase. And my third question was, is the phasing even possible? But again, if the, if the purpose of the phasing was trying to drive down costs and not trigger the ADA accessibility, that point is moot. However, I guess the question is still relevant as to whether or not phasing is still possible, given other discoveries about the building.
Like most things, almost anything is possible. I am certain it will be more expensive. In particular, because of the asbestos containing material in the wall. So anytime we open up a wall, for instance, when we did some exploratory work in the library, just to see what was inside of the wall, we had to do it on a weekend. We had to do it with licensed people. We had to actually seal that material up when we were done, to, to make it safe when we were done and walked away from it. That type of activity does not work very well with operating an ongoing library from a worker safety standpoint. So most likely, any significant, you know, replacing the HVAC system, for instance, replacing ductwork, replacing piping, things like that, would likely impact enough of the area of the library that it couldn't be partitioned off and made safe and still be able to continue operating it as a library while that work was ongoing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Hagner?
I just wanna set the record straight that I checked on the town website and the assessed value of the building in 2024 was about $24 million. So it's right there. There's also $25 million in FY25, but it's not clear how that breaks out between the land and the building. So.
Thank you. Did you have your question, Bob? Okay, thank you. Andy Steinberg?
Yes, actually, Bob Parent just answered some of the questions that I had been starting to ask because I was gonna ask about the asbestos, the HVAC and the extent of the work that needs to be done on that. It's my reading of the Kuhn Riddle report that I want, and I'm looking for comment on this, that once you move out of the library or close the library for an extended period of time, that it then makes sense to group as much of repair as possible within that period of time so that it could be done most efficiently. And that therefore, phasing over long periods of time actually doesn't work. Is that a correct reading?
Yes, certainly. The most efficient project is to do everything all at the same time. You know, that will have the lowest overall project cost, not only do the value of money over time and other things, but you have less repetitive work, you have less costs for relocation, temporary space, things like that. And you have a more efficient project. You, you know, you, you can go in there and do everything at one time. You generally face projects because of money limitations, not because they're the best way to do things, but because you have a certain amount of funds that you might have available at a certain time, realizing that over time, you're gonna spend more money than you would have if you had done it all at once.
Seems to me like this is a good place to stop and go to public comment. And so while I'm talking about the rules of public comment, I'm going to ask that if you are on Zoom, and that is where our audience is tonight. In fact, there are 248 people on Zoom in the audience. I think we unfortunately had to make the call we did and I'm glad we did because we could go with, go along with the meeting. So if you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand now. Okay. Okay. Can I just mention, at this point, 62 people have raised their hand. 248. Okay. So let me establish the following. Public comments on matters with, are on matters within the jurisdiction of the town council. And in this case, this is a focused public comment. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to two minutes. And I will just tell you, I cannot go any lower than that based on our own rules of procedure. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions of the town council. There is a clock. I want you to all make sure you notice the clock. And it makes an obnoxious noise when you get to the end of the two minutes. If you can keep it under two minutes, that's good because our council rules also say that if we get to two hours of public comment, the council has to vote to extend the period. Okay. The First Amendment broadly protects individual rights to address the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their right to say hateful and offensive things. I am generally unable to shut those commenters down under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, unless their level of speech falls within an exception articulated by the courts, such as fighting words, true threats to a particular individual, harassment of a particular individual, or incitement of imminent lawlessness activity. If a question exists as to whether a particular speaker is engaging in unprotected speech, I must defer to the principles of freedom of speech. We'll recognize speakers in the order in which they have raised their hands. And there are, I have to get this to go. Fifty-seven. Thank you. So when we, when you enter the room, please state your name and where you live. Carol Johnson, please enter the room. Unmute and go ahead.
Thank you. I'm not sure you can see me, but I hope you can hear me.
We can.
Okay. I really want to touch on two different subjects. One is the commitment that my husband and I have made to the library, to the Friends of the, the Jones Library System. And the other is fundraising in Amherst as a whole. I forgot to say, I live in Precinct Three. We have resided in Amherst for 25 years and raised our daughters here. I was the executive director of the Amherst Cinema from its, from before it was opened until 2020, for a total of 13 years. With the help of a lot of people, we raised the money to renovate the cinema. And we raised an ongoing amount of money every year to help carry operational costs. I am very optimistic that the Friends of the Jones will be able to raise the money needed to complete the project and that the discussion that we had earlier about who pays for overages really becomes moot. People stepped forward. When we were renovating the Amherst Cinema, some people with very large gifts and others with much more modest gifts. The Friends of the Jones have not even undertaken a townwide capital campaign yet, asking for donations from citizens.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you, Carol. Rob Cusner, please enter the room. Please go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for inviting so many of us to speak about this. I'm from District One. I've lived in town for almost four decades and I, I must say that listening to the discussion about the various options and as someone who grew up in a city with a free library and also with the Franklin Institute Library, from which I learned a great deal, perhaps even more than I learned from most of my teachers, but quite a bit from them too. I love libraries and I've always been a supporter of the Jones Library and the whole system, the Munson, the North Amherst Library, places where my family spent much time. I also love historic buildings and nothing has been said about the, the value of the historic structure that is going to be unfortunately demolished in large part, not in its entirety, but in large part as a result of this particular design. And as much as I'd love to see a wonderful new library, I don't think this project is going to, on balance, do what it could do if we were to rethink things, start again, and try to create a library that makes better use of the existing facilities there. I know a lot about finance. Invested a little bit in municipal bonds today. I'm sure you guys can float bonds, but that's not the entire point. Your project manager already acknowledged that there are gonna be some hard choices ahead. And I think that you're gonna find that some of the choices are so hard, you will either have to come up with a lot more money or sacrifice things that are even more gruesome than what are being sacrificed now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Todd, please state your full name.
Hi, I'm Todd Holland. I live in South Amherst, District Five, I believe, Elville Road. I've lived here for a couple of decades and I've worked in commercial construction for 40 years, including for all five colleges. Just let me say, I'm odd to be here in front of these groups, the town council and the library trustees. I love it every time I get to see them, even on my screen. I usually just see their names in emails and whatnot or in campaign signs on other people's lawns. And I'm so grateful for the work that you all do and you're so, it's just awesome, the level of talent and dedication that we have here right now. And full disclosure, I've worked with the Library Committee on Sustainability issues for this very project, so I'm very much invested in it. And I've been to the library twice over the past two weeks to see the awesome staff and the other people who hang out there. And I just want to encourage everyone, these are challenging times and we cannot do more important work. We have to do this, as Austin said, now is the time more than ever. I've worked at all four, all five colleges. The financial resources of the college vary greatly from Hampshire to Amherst to UMass where I work now. And the most important thing is that when we get into a building and we have a chance to do something, we do everything we can and that we do the best job that we can. I mean, Andy Steinberg and Bob, holy cow, you know, Bob, the, what a great project manager. Whoever hired him, give yourself
We need to ask you to, thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thanks. Doug, please enter the room and state your full name.
Thank you, Lynn. Doug Marshall, 64 Eames Ave. I, I want to say that I strongly support the library project. I urge the council not to rescind the prior motions. And, and I urge them to allow the project to proceed. I have pledged to the library project. I intend to fully fulfill my pledge and I will do so on whatever schedule the library asks me to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Bill, please enter the room. State your full name.
Hello. This is Bill Worley, District Three. Twenty-five-year resident of Amherst. Worked in the public schools for 10 years and we sent our, our two children graduated from the public schools. We, my wife and I strongly support the library project. We are donors and committed to honoring our, our pledge in whatever timeframe makes sense for the project. Libraries and schools are our most important public institutions. How we fund and support these, these libraries and schools is a measure of our commitment to our community and to the, the coming generations. Accessibility, sustainability, fully resourced libraries are, are a measure of those commitments and we should all work towards that. I want to thank the board, the library board for their work as well as the professional staff that has been working tirelessly on this. And I hope the town council will continue to support the, the, the library project. If, thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Lori, please enter the room. State your full name. And unmute.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Lori Friedman. I live at, on Blue Hills Road in District Three. And I fully support the library project. I have lived here for 30 years. My kids graduated from the public high school and they, we spent many, many hours in the library, which even back then needed some work. And 30 years on, it's, it's time and I'm really concerned about halting this at this time. I feel that it's incredibly short-sighted to stop. There have been many hours and countless hours of professional time invested in this, both from the town and all of the people who have been hired to, to participate and, and present estimates and all the different things that have gone into this and the board of the library working to get us to this point. And so I, I think it again, would be short-sighted to stop and it's important to create a sustainable library that will take the next generations into the future. And it's important to create a sustainable library that will take the next generations into the future. So I really ask that the council moves forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Laura Drucker, please enter the room, state, just please enter the room, Laura. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Laura Drucker, I live in District One. I've provided several comments on the benefit of the Jones Library Project in the past. This project will meet the evolving needs of our community. It will reduce the financial and environmental cost of burning fossil fuels and it, and it will increase the safety and accessibility of this space. And all of these are still very much true. I've also appreciated the council's diligence to set a clear spending limit for this project. We are a town with many needs and we need to hold ourselves to account. I appreciate the concern and focus on this, which is clear from many of your questions tonight. We simply cannot sugarcoat the fact that stopping this project now will cost the town of Amherst more money in the long run. Tariffs, pandemics, and irrational presidents certainly introduce more uncertainty in cost swings. But on average, the cost of labor materials simply do not decrease over time. There is zero evidence that we can renovate this space for less than the Town Council has allocated for this project and most evidence points to this being more expensive. The only reason to stop this project tonight is because you know without a doubt that the cost of this project to the town will go above the agreed-upon amount. From what I heard tonight from Paul and the trustees, this is simply not the case. I understand you may feel that stopping this project is a short-term solution to alleviate pressure, but it is not a solution at all. It will be a vote to further kick this project, together with the two other capital projects that are still very much needed, down the road for future taxpayers to deal with. This decision certainly would not provide any relief to our operational costs or help the school budget in the short or the long term. Furthermore, the state taxes we all pay into the MBLC will go to other communities, since my understanding is that we can't reapply for those funds for thirty years. Please do not make a rash decision that only creates more costs and challenges. You would need a plan in place for how to pay for a more expensive project. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Laura. Letitia LaFalle, please, please enter the room. Please go ahead.
Can you, yes, can you hear me? Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Letitia LaFalle, Dana Street in District Three. My husband and I have pledged a five-figure contribution to the Jones renovation project, which we enthusiastically support. Not only is our pledge good, as are the pledges of all the donors with whom I have recently spoken, but many of them are waiting for the town manager to sign a contract so they can give more. Here are three reasons the project should go forward and the motion on the floor tonight be defeated. The first is inclusivity. The renovated Jones will be the most inclusive space in Amherst. It will better serve our community by providing accessibility and expanded services, including for our most vulnerable residents. It creates a pride of place for the Civil War tablets that commemorate the sacrifices of Amherst African-American community, as well as a sorely needed climate-controlled exhibition room for Amherst history, including precious collections of Emily Dickinson and Robert Frost materials. Second, libraries are our most democratic institutions, critically important as sources of trusted, unbiased information. We owe it to the sixty-five percent of the voters who supported this project, which has gone through the town's democratic processes multiple times to see it through. Finally, it is fiscally responsible. Careful stewardship has leveraged the town's contribution of fifteen-point-eight million and more than doubled it with the Massachusetts Library Commission grant and the capital campaign. In addition, any cost averages, as we've heard, will be borne by the Library Trustees and not the town of Amherst. The capital campaign, which is not yet in its public phase, has already raised more than any other in our town's history, over ten million dollars. Many residents are eager for the contract to be signed so they can contribute to it. In contrast, repairs to the building will cost far more and the town will be on the hook for it all with no MBLC or capital campaign to help defray the additional costs. It seems clear to me that rejecting the project now would be fiscally irresponsible, with also devastating consequences for any future building project in the town. I respectfully ask the council to defeat this motion.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Nina M., please state your full name.
My name is Nina Mankin. I live in District One. I'm just going to my notes here. I want to start by saying that I also have made a pledge to the library campaign and that I'm confident that others like me fully plan to fulfill those pledges. And I made that commitment because I have witnessed what a twenty-first century library means for a community and because I have a thirteen-year-old child who did not get to attend a new elementary school. We lost that opportunity and our family will be paying taxes on the enormously more expensive school we will complete in two thousand twenty-seven. I want my teenager to be able to leave his existing crumbling school building and take advantage of at least one twenty-first century facility in our town. If we kill this facility, if we kill this project, it will once again cost us tens of millions of dollars of outside investment. Why would we do that to ourselves? Why would we choose to Band-Aid a facility that does not adequately serve our children, our seniors, our immigrant populations? And I humbly suggest that if you think it does, you do not know what we're missing. Even if those Band-Aids ended up costing us slightly less, which any number of professionals have refuted, why would we do that? Why, as a community, are we not celebrating the extraordinary fundraising the Library Trustees and professionals have done? Let's not create any more costly delays or lose these funds. Let's celebrate for the thirty million dollars of outside funds coming into our community and rather than talk about how an inadequate facility is really just fine for our residents, let's support an investment in our community that is unparalleled in our history and that will support all of us for long into the future through good times and bad. It will not go away. Thank you so much and thank you for your service.
Thanks for joining us. Jeff Lee, please enter the room.
Jeff Lee, District Five. We're in the middle of an environmental review required for releasing two-point-one million dollars in federal funds for the project. Forty-five-day HUD public comment and objection period ends on May thirteenth. HUD's funding award letter makes it clear that signing a construction contract before the money is authorized for release is not permitted. The Jones Library Capital Campaign raised sixteen-hundred-and-five dollars in pledges in March and one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine in February. Its remaining commitment is seven million dollars. In light of this performance, the town manager's memo complaining, claiming that the library is good for their share is very unconvincing. The town manager's analysis was based on the library endowment being worth nine million dollars. It had sunk to eight-point-eight million dollars by April first. We don't know the effect of the Liberation Day crash on April second. Before it was derailed by the project, the town of Amherst's five-year capital program included funding for HVAC replacement, roof and chimney repairs, a fire system upgrade, new carpet, exterior lighting, upgraded insulation, exterior renovations, and redesign of the interlibrary loan delivery room for a total cost of seven-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. That's a tiny fraction of the cost of taxpayers of the now fifty-five-million-dollar renovation expansion program with interest payment. It's a tiny fraction of that. Amherst should return to the JCPC process where Jones Library needs are balanced against the needs of the schools and town buildings. Federal funds, capital campaign funds, Joan Library resources, borrowing costs, the effect on Amherst's competing priorities, and even the MBLC grant, which requires a construction contract by April thirtieth, are all in question. No fiscally responsible official would invest any more time or money into this project. And finally, Counselor George Ryan is a member of the Jones Library Capital Campaign, whose mission is to raise money for the library project. He should recuse himself from this.
Thank you, Jeff. Carol Gray. Enter the room, please.
Carol Gray, Amherst taxpayer at eight-fifteen Southeast Street, Amherst. I would ask you to vote to rescind this funding. I was a Library Trustee for three years. I chaired the Budget Committee of the Library. I formed what was in the Green Committee. I served as a Joint Capital Planning Committee Library Representative, so I'm familiar with capital budgeting. First of all, let's just look at this project in our big picture. So forty-six millions dollars for a library. If you heard of a town paying that much for a library while they were laying off teachers, you'd think they were crazy. We're firing teachers, we're cutting school programs. We have a son who recently finished the, the, all eighteen years in, in our public school system in Amherst. And thank goodness he got through because he got to take advantage of all the foreign languages, all the music programs, which he's using now in college. I really worry for the next generation. What we're doing is like buying a Tesla when you can't afford groceries. You don't buy a forty-six-million-dollar library, you don't buy a Tesla, even if it's on sale, when you can't afford groceries. The teachers are our groceries, the schools are our groceries. You don't give that up. In terms of the repair option, this is a total legal and financial fiction to say that we can't, do we have to do this forty-six-million-dollar project because repairs would cost more? That's ridiculous. I was on the library on the Joint Capital Planning Committee. You put in capital projects month by month, year by year, and that's how you pay for them. By the way, accessibility projects are eligible for CPA funding. Community Preservation Act funding was used year after year and you, and there's no way you'd even come close to thirty percent of the whole building. You just fix the roof when you can, one, one year, then the next year you replace the HVAC. It's fiscally irresponsible for the library to use this endowment. The endowment is probably closer to eight million now. We were at a four percent draw when I was a Library Trustee. To say that you're going to use that, that is how you fund yearly expenses. You never paid for yearly expenses.
Thank you for your comments, Carol. Katie, please enter the room and state your full name.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Katie Lazzdowski and I live in Lynn and Pat's district. I want to first start by thanking everybody for the work that you put forth in the years that have gone into this. My concern in listening to, listening to the conversation tonight is that we haven't addressed the new realities that we are in. And I say this from a nonprofit organization employee that has been with a organization that is now forty years old this year and our budget has been slashed in half. State Department grants. And I am a partner to a Fish and Wildlife employee. So every night we're coming home and discussing these new realities. So these are at the forefront of my head. And so my head has not been at the local level, but we would be remiss if we weren't looking at the larger context in terms of the funding that we're counting on. Sounds like we're banking on it in terms of the federal, two million dollars, as well as the state-level funding. To touch upon Sir Rockman's point, the program officers can share with us whatever they know. But at the end of the day, on the day that programs may be cut or funding may be cut, they're unaware of that because Judge just comes in and makes these cuts. So I would advise, if we're going to move forward, we need a contingency plan as to how we will make up for those federal and state-level grants because not facing the new realities would be greatly fiscally irresponsible. And that combined with tariffs and not having an accurate figure, I mean, it's forty-six-point-one, but that was back in November. So let's redo the budget. Thanks.
Thank you for joining us. Irv Rhodes, please enter the room.
Good evening. The first thing I want to say is that I admire the camera facilities that the council has access to because everyone looks really good.
Please speak further into your mic, Irv.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So anyway, when I sit here and listen to the comments being made, two words come up and that's fear and anxiety. And when there are fears and anxiety, the council or anyone else, the best that they can do in that which is required of them is to answer those fears and anxieties with honesty and transparency. And once you've accomplished that and you're satisfied with that, you must move on. And so I really want to say yes to moving on with this library project. Does it mean that I don't have any fears or anxiety? It does not. But that which I have listened to tonight, in terms of everyone who has talked, the questions that have been asked, the answers that have been given, and the fortrightness of the Library Board Trustees, I fully support this going forward. Most importantly, I am an ex-middle-school librarian. And most people don't know that. But my first job out of college after my masters was a middle, a middle-school librarian, as a middle-school librarian. I am a lib, library person and I fully support and know what libraries can do for a school and for a town. So I, I really fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Irv. Nancy Campbell.
Nancy Campbell, Middle Street, District Five. I'm addressing town councilors who are having doubts about committing to this project. Your dedication to fiscal responsibility is appreciated. After all, New England is known for its cautious and deliberate folks. This project is at a now-or-never-breaking point, however. I fear that a child born today would be thirty years old before, before a fully functional library could be realized if this go-ahead moment for the current project is not seized. Counselors, experienced fundraisers with long-proven track records have spent years amassing millions of dollars in pledges. So much careful work has been accomplished. One hundred years ago, Amherst seized the moment to construct the current mighty building right before the Great Depression hit in nineteen-twenty-nine. Little did they know then that the Jones Endowment money could have dwindled away if they had not gone forward to build when they did. Luckily, the library was in place in nineteen-twenty-eight, an anchor for the townspeople through the Great Depression. These are again challenging, precarious times indeed. Tonight envision a newly renovated peaceful oasis for every member of our community, democratically voted on and designed to endure the test of time. Please do think ahead, thirty years, one hundred years from now. Please allow us to seize this critical moment for our library of the near and distant future. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Neil Immerman, please enter the room.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
So I'm Neil Immerman. I live on Hillcrest Place in Amherst. I'm here with my wife, Susan Landau, and, and I'll give her over half my time. I just want to say that we've lived in Amherst for thirty-five years. We love the town, including the schools and the library. We very much support this project. We really want it to go forward. Please let it go forward now.
And I'm Susan. I want to say how wonderful the library was when our children were small, all the different facilities we used, the reading clubs in the summer, the, the fantastic books the library had, the great help we had from the librarians in picking books. When I had breast cancer, they found books for the children to read that were appropriate. They were just amazing. And now here I am, I'm a faculty member at Tufts. And, and doing my research, I am using the library to borrow books from other libraries when the library doesn't have texts that maybe even UMass doesn't always store or Tufts doesn't have because I'm not go, or I don't go in. So the, the library has just been an amazing resource and I feel we need to push it, give forward. That's the first thing. The second thing is, if we don't go forward right now, there's a tremendous opportunity cost, including what our politicians have done for us in getting, in gaining us these grants. And then finally, this whole discussion is happening because of these uncertain times. And all I can say is, I can't think of a better thing to fund than a library that has books and ideas for people of the community to read, to listen to, to discuss and to talk. So please go forward with the project.
Thank you both for joining us. Barbara Partey, please enter the room.
I'm, I'm Barbara Partey. I live on Hobart Lane in District One. I support the library project. And one aspect of the project that I want to mention, that I consider really important, is the improved space it will give for the wonderful English as a Second Language Program. With the help of great many volunteers, that program offers classes, tutors, and citizenship programs for all sorts of English language learners, including elderly immigrants, some of whom are even illiterate in their first for all sorts of English language learners, including elderly immigrants, some of whom are even illiterate in their first language. That program has never had enough space. And the new design will offer much better and more stable space for this really treasured service. I've pledged financial support for the project, and I promise to pay my pledge whenever they ask for it. Please do move forward with the project. And I am grateful for your steadfast service in these challenging times. And I put my trust in you to do the right thing, sorry, for this wonderful pillar of our town.
Thank you for joining us. Alex LaFave, please enter the room.
Alex LaFave, District Four. The creation of addition to the library will remove the limitations that exist in the current building and provide the vital extra space needed. After four workers at Red Fire Farm were arrested by ICE and thirteen students at UMass had their visas terminated, it's more important than ever to demonstrate our commitment to our friends and our neighbors. The award-winning Citizenship and English Language Program, which is dedicated to helping immigrants and refugees feel welcome and able to navigate and become vital members of our community, will gain much-needed additional space. One in five high school students seriously considered attempting suicide in twenty twenty-three. And it's one of the leading causes of death in adolescents and young adults. Suicide rates are rising dramatically in pre-teens as young as eight years old, with an eight-point-two percent annual increase from two thousand eight to twenty twenty-two. Suicide rates in transgender and nonconforming teenagers increases as much as seventy-two percent after anti-transgender laws aimed at minors are passed. In twenty twenty-five, thirty-six anti-trans bills have been introduced nationally, eight-hundred fifty-four on a state basis and six in Massachusetts. Libraries are considered safe spaces by populations who have been marginalized. Evidence has shown that dedicated teen spaces within libraries create a positive, safe environment for learning and socializing, which encourages emotional, social, and intellectual growth while building a sense of belonging and community. The bonds of social trust that serve and support democracy are deteriorating. Public trust in government and confidence in institutions is declining across the board with the exception of one institution, libraries. Libraries serve people of every age, income level, location, ethnicity, and physical ability. Libraries are places of hope that knit communities together because they're often the one place in any community where individuals can visit at no cost, mixes equals, without regard to class, education, citizenship, or other demographic characteristics. When we neglect social infrastructure, we grow more isolated with fewer opportunities for socializing, especially with others who may not look or think the way we do. When we invest in social infrastructure such as parks, schools, and libraries.
Thank you for joining us, Alex.
Thanks, bye.
Rebecca Mazur.
Thank you all so much um for being so dedicated to the town and what the taxpayers will bear. I, I don't have any other words of persuasion for you. I just wanted to add, oh, I live on Amity Street. I don't know what district that is. Uh, but I just wanted to add my voice to the other chorus um that is uh supporting the library project and hoping that you'll move forward with it. And thank all of you for all that you do for us. I know this is a really tough decision. Thanks.
Thank you for joining us. Willis Bradigan. Please unmute.
Thank you. Uh, uh, I live on Memorial Drive in District Three. I am a former Jones Library trustee. I served for thirty years as the librarian of Amherst College. The proposed Jones Library Project has my unequivocal support. It addresses critical problems that have accumulated over many, many years. The library trustees and its director have worked responsibly to identify and evaluate the library's most important needs. The Friends of the Library are conducting a successful campaign to help fund the project. And the residents of our town have repeatedly expressed their support for this project. This is not the time for the Town Council to have second thoughts about this much-needed project. My wife and I have contributed to this effort and have pledged to provide additional support for it once the library's construction is guaranteed. I want to thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this important project. I strongly encourage you to vote for, uh, to vote to reject the motion to rescind the borrowing authorization for the Jones Library renovation and expansion. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thanks for joining us. Bruce Peniman, please enter the room.
Uh, hello, my name is Bruce Peniman. I live on South.
Please speak a little more into your mic.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Bruce Peniman. I live on South Montholly Oak Drive. And I would like to speak in opposition to the proposal to rescind the uh borrowing authorization for this. Uh, which is the latest and I hope the last attempt to derail this much-needed project. Uh, my wife and I have lived in Amherst for fifty years and raised our children here and taught in the public schools for decades. Uh, we know the value of the Jones Library and we strongly support the project and we have contributed to the capital campaign. The um, the project has been carefully planned, revised, and vetted for over ten years. It has passed all of the necessary hurdles and navigated through many unnecessary ones, in my opinion. It's time to move forward. Uh, the capital campaign has been remarkably successful uh so far, I think, considering the um, the, the pall that's been cast over the uh, uh, the project by relentless uh opposition and obstruction to it. Once the contract is signed and shovels are in the ground, the dollars will flow. I'm confident of that. And I want to remind everyone that we've been down this road before with the elementary school project. Uh, and we are now paying for that mistake, uh, which also hastened the demise of the town meeting, former government town. Please, let's not compound that error. Uh, please move forward with this project. Um, let's get it built. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. Ian Rodeawalt.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name's Ian Rodeawalt. I live on Pine Street in District One. Um, thank you for all your service, uh, councilors and uh, library committee. I wanted to say that I feel that it is unnecessary to spend at least forty-six million dollars to build a new library building project for a library that is not currently being used to the extent that the new project envisions. Uh, at the same time, when the school buildings that Amherst's children attend are crumbling, when teachers, paraeducators, school bus drivers, and custodial staff don't get paid enough, and positions in the schools and uh, courses in the schools have been cut, and when the town's roads are in extreme disrepair. Additionally, with the state of the global economy as uncertain as it is currently, and the cost of construction materials rising, uh, it does not make sense to continue with the library project. Please stop this project by taking back your authorization to borrow the forty-six million dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Richard Vincent.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, hi. Um, I'm Dick Vincent. I'm at uh, in District Five. And I just really don't know how to, how to reach this, but I haven't heard anything except for maybe one or two callers talk about the larger picture here. We're for those of you who don't know me, and there's a few here that do. Um, I owned what people considered to be the major retail business in Amherst uh for decades and a lifelong Amherst resident. And I don't understand what we're, what we're doing here. Um, to be very honest with you, I would have thought with everything going on in the world, and I know Amherst is different. As a supermarket operator, um, my peers throughout New England used to say when recession hit us, you know, um, boy, you are so fortunate um, to have the industry of education. And that has really been a great buffer for us. But I think we have to lift up our heads and we have to recognize today what's going on and look to be able to fund our schools, keep our roads paved, keep our seniors safe, have clean water, have our fire and police funded and be in a position to buy a new fire truck if we need one. We need to look at all of that. It's hard to even talk about this today. But we are in a situation where we don't know what's gonna happen. And Amherst needs to.
Thank you for joining us, Richard. Liz Lars, please enter the room.
Uh, good evening. I also just sincerely want to say thank you to everybody who has been working on this project for the many, many years. Again, sincere thank you. I am currently the Executive Director of the Amherst Historical Society, located at the Strong House next to the Jones Library. I also help operate the Drake as part of the Downtown Amherst Foundation. Previously, I worked for the Amherst Business Improvement District for six years. One thing I learned in all of these roles is how intertwined all of our downtown institutions and businesses are. It is the mix of our cultural, educational, entertainment, and commercial offerings that allows each of us to thrive. And the heart of our downtown is the Jones Library, quite literally. More importantly, it is the figurative heart of our community. This is a place where all are welcome, children, teens, retirees. It welcomes not only those who have lived in Amherst their entire lives, but those who are new to Amherst and those who are new to the US. This renovation and expansion project will strengthen this heart by providing increased and better opportunities for children and family programming, teen activities, and the ESL program. It will strengthen our ability to preserve and present our shared culture through modern facilities for special collections, a home for the Civil War tablets, and increased spaces for exhibits, lectures, and performances. This is not a building, construction, and renovation project. This is a community revitalization project. Please vote for a pri- vibrant downtown Amherst and against rescinding the financial authorization. And again, thank you so much for all that you do for the town.
Thank you for joining us. Hilda Greenbaum, please enter the room.
I'm Hilda Greenbaum on Montague Road, District One, and we are four generations of users of the Jones Library with the fifth generation on its way. So we are book people and uh, I'm changing my, my little speech that I had prepared this afternoon because it looks like this project is gonna go ahead. But I'd like to remind you that the manager would not sign a contract with Wright Brothers for the North Amherst Library until the empire, one million seven hundred and fifty thousand from Fidelity Charitable Trust remained in the town's account for three full business days. He was worried about the town being stuck with a debt that we couldn't afford. And that was two years ago. And then two years ago, there were no predictions, predictions of recession, nor worse depression being expressed by reputable economists two years ago. Um, seven million dollars owned by Jones Library to the town taxpayers is magnitudes more money and Fidelity, Fidelity Charitable Trust is magnitudes less risk. Um, I'm, I'm saying that nobody has mentioned who the town or the library is paying the fifty-five million dollars, which I'm told is the total amount after interest. I don't, I think that amount of money is unconscionable and irresponsible. Um, Steve Puffer called North Amherst the Dirty Hands District for all of factories and factory workers in North Amherst. We still have many retirees living in those small houses that they've owned for many years, some born here. Their economic circumstances are quite different from those in other districts in answer, in Amherst and for most members of the town. They are struggling to remain in town.
Thank you for joining us.
And I just want to end it by saying we've been in restoration and preservation business for sixty-five years. And I am asking you to please be conscious of the cost of the taxpayer in the name of my husband, who was a former trustee of the Jones Library.
Thank you for joining us. Martha Hannah, please enter the room.
Martha Hannah, District Five. I've lived here twenty years. I urge you to cancel appropriation and borrowing authorization for the Jones Library expansion project. In the current national financial environment, this project is really no longer viable and the expectations of outside funding are no longer really credible. It's just not credible to believe that any federal grant will arrive. The Hitchcock Center learned just a few days ago that their grant from the Museum and Library Foundation was canceled. And I worry even about the state grants since their fund, federal funding is being cut off. The library's endowment is, is small in this shaky economic environment. I, it's not credible to believe they're really going to be able to refund the town. I was just not satisfied with the answers to Counselor Shane's uh questions about the immediate uh refunding. And it's not credible to believe that construction costs will not increase with the tariffs and supply problems. As the elected financial stewards of our town, you really need to seriously recognize that the library expansion is a very big risk to our town's finances. And sadly, it's a luxury that I really question now. Um, yes, green, dreams die hard, but this is not the only dream being shattered by our new administration. And I'm con- very concerned about the, our limited financial resources for the dreams of our children for equality education. Here we are laying off teachers, the dreams of our local families for affordable food and housing, and the dreams of all our residents for a just and equitable society. I don't see that the library is being used to the extent that's been glowingly described, even though I love libraries. Very concerned about that school.
Joining us.
Thank you.
Sigurd Nilsson, please.
Hello. I'm Sigurd Nilsson. When I, I live at twenty-seven Teaberry Lane in District Five. I have PhD in economics from Cornell University and spent my career with the Government Accountability Office, GAO, assessing the effectiveness and efficiency of a range of government programs. I urge town councilors to revoke the borrowing authorization for this project. This project has barely survived numerous challenges, which include escalating costs of over thirty percent, a shortfall of millions of dollars in fundraising, having many sustainability features stripped away, in addition to losing historic preservation tax credits. Now with Trump's erratic economic policies, our economy may well enter a recession. And with tariffs already in place, prices of construction materials will increase, which would have serious impacts on the total cost of the Jones Project. Now is the time to focus on essential public projects. This Jones Project is not essential. A renovation of the existing Jones Building is a more fiscally responsible course of action that would also allow the town to focus its limited resources on higher priority capital projects, like a new DPW headquarters, a new fire station, while also making progress on our crumbling streets and sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Cheryl Zoll, please enter the room.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Zoll. I'm a longtime District Four resident and I fully support the building project and the council's continuing borrowing authorization. I won't say much about how important the library is others have, but I just wanted to say that having led fundraising efforts for the Amherst Survival Center and other organizations, I know that during difficult times, they don't actually hinder giving, they inspire it. When our community sees an urgent need, it rallies, and it has rallied in the past. I've seen it many times. And there's no reason to doubt that Amherst is gonna rise to this. And there's no reason to doubt that Amherst is going to rise to this occasion. My husband and I have pledged to the campaign and will fulfill our pledge once construction's underway. This campaign is so impressive, with more than four-fifths of the necessary funds already raised before the campaign has even entered its public phase, and with the depth of largely volunteer fundraising expertise behind the Jones Library project, we have the momentum. Now we need your support to see it through, and so I urge the councilors to vote against rescinding the borrowing authorization and let this project move forward for the good of our community. Thanks.
Thank you for joining us, Cheryl. Jennifer Baumann, please enter the room.
Hi, my name is Seth Welsh. I'm actually Jennifer Baumann's husband. And she is an employee of Jones Library. And I wanted just to, I manage construction projects for a living. And I wanted to just go through a few of the construction points. When it comes to the ADA trigger, for example, it was noted that it was a five-year trigger, and it's actually a three-year look-back trigger, not a five-year look-back trigger. And the reality is that the 2016 numbers for a renovation project are completely meaningless at this point. And so I want to ask the community and the town council what it is that you want for the town's money. Because if the town contributes a third of the money toward a renovated project, you get a 21st century library, or you contribute 100% to the renovation project on a smaller scale to make do with what you have and what's left, right? Is it really meet a 21st century library's needs? I think any discussion about phasing should be reminded that mobilization and construction is real. And every time you re-mobilize, you lose a tremendous percentage of the cost, probably around 10% to re-mobilize, plus inflation on the mobilized work. So the reality is that by phasing any project, you will spend considerably more. Only once in anyone's lifetime that is on this call have construction prices decreased in the United States. And that was in the Great Recession of 2008. The chance right now is to take advantage of really good and favorable pricing. Your contractors have agreed to keep the pricing they have. Contractors that I've spoken to are only agreeing to keep prices for a week. You have a contractor that has agreed to maintain the price they have, and I urge you to take that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. There's somebody with a caller. I'm not going to repeat the number. We don't do that. But please state your name when you enter the room. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Vincent O'Connor. I live at 175 Summer Street, Apartment 12 in District 1. I've lived in Amherst for 51 years. What I have to, I urge the council to rescind the borrowing. We actually have more than eight other libraries in town. One in every public school, two at the colleges, and a number of libraries at UMass. So we don't, we're not going to be without a library. In fact, we will be without a library for a long time, a much longer time, if we engage in this project than if we did the renovations. I urge you to listen to my Precinct 1 counselor, Kathy Shane, who was responsible for getting a project, a school project, as the Chair of the Building Committee. A school project that actually will work and be 21st century, rather than the disaster that would have happened at Wildwood School had we gone through with it. Having lived in town with the Fort River and Wildwood Schools for a very long time, I can guarantee you that it was worth losing town meeting in order to not have the Wildwood School project that would have been a disaster. This project is based on a population user that is nonsense. Involves 20,000 college students and all sorts of towns that now have new libraries. And for every million dollars of the endowment that is-
Thank you for joining us, Vince.
-put into this project, they will lose $40,000 in operating costs for the library.
Thank you.
Which will be made-
Amber Cano-Martin, please enter the room.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. My name is Amber Cano-Martin. I live in District 2. I have two children currently in the public school system. You've seen me recently because I've come in to talk about budget cuts and how they're impacting our children, both at the elementary level and the middle school and high school level. For me, as a parent, to not make the connection between the sad state of our schools and this project would be ridiculous because it's so clear. I've been in this town now for over 10 years, and I remember when this project started and they told us, sure, we have enough money for everything. Sure, it's a big project. We still can do every single building project. We can do the DPW and the fire station and the school. And that was just, it's always been magical thinking. And if you don't believe me, then like, look what's happening to the schools. It's clear as day. Look what's happening to our roads. Look how many people have written to Lynn and Pat in my district about the condition of our roads. And think about how that's going to amplify year after year after year as there continues to be no money for those things. But there is money for a $46 million library. We don't need a library that big. What I really need for my children is for there to be teachers in their school. And what I really needed for them was that there be par educators in the libraries that they do go to in their school buildings. But we couldn't even keep a par educator in the Wildwood Schools. They were cut. So now there's even less services in the one library that my children use. So again, many people have come here tonight to say, we've been doing this for 10 years. We put so much into it. I will remind everyone here what a sunk cost fallacy is. A mistake does not stop being a mistake because you keep pushing forward with it. I do not want to be coming here year after year to you begging for more money for our children's schools. In conclusion, I would say, repeating another caller, we should not be buying a Tesla if we can't afford groceries. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Sharon Kearney?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you for taking my comment. My name is Sharon Kearney, and I am in District 5. And I am speaking tonight in strong support of the Jones Library project. And I strongly urge you to reject any efforts to stall or halt funding for the project. If you want, you can read the comment that I sent in, in which I openly gush about how much I love the library as a parent, as an adult, as a faculty member at UMass, where my students also regularly use the library and thinking about how they are going to teach their future students through the help of the wonderful librarians. And I see it as such an asset to our community. And I am so impressed by the work that the librarians and the trustees and everyone else has already done and is doing on a daily basis and in regard to this project and all of that work. This is the time to continue on this momentum that we have, as other callers have said. I know similarly to other callers that there is a lot of fear right now because of the turbulent political times. And I also see this as a time where we must invest in these resources. This is a time where there are deliberate efforts to restrict access to information by defunding libraries and educational institutions. And I believe we must rise to the challenge as a community to fight against these efforts and that we need to protect our rights to information, information that's grounded in facts and diverse perspectives. And this requires us to work harder and maybe invest more. But like others, I've also pledged to the library, and I'm willing to do that and invest more. And I see our schools and libraries as partners, not adversaries, and how these two institutions should function together to provide education to our entire community. I'm in full support of the schools and the library. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Just want to note that we're approaching our first hour. So that to the extent that people can keep their comments short is very much appreciated by all of us. Anne Harrington, please enter the room.
Hi, my name is Anne Harrington. I reside on Van Veta Drive in District 1. I strongly support the library project. My partner and I are donors. We will certainly fulfill our pledge, and if the project goes forward and contracts are signed, we certainly are poised to donate more. So I ask the town council to not rescind authorization for the project. I certainly respect the financial concerns, given federal uncertainty and all the demands on the town. But the fact is, it's not as if the town is being asked to fork over $46 million. It's asked to come in with about $15 million. And frankly, if this project is canceled out and we have to go back to rehabbing the current building, it's going to cost slightly more. Town citizens voted to move ahead with the expansion and renovation. I think we should still honor that and move forward with it. So we have, enough people have talked about how much we gain and how much we need a new library. And certainly, if you walk around the UMass Amherst campus, you can see that you can have a building that honors an older part historically while adding a really dynamic, new, contemporary part. And I think the designs honor the history of the building. It's a sustainable building. I sincerely hope that the town agrees to move forward with this. And I thank you all for the amount of time you're putting into considering this. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, Anne. Somebody with an iPad, please enter the room and state your full name.
Hi, this is Erica Ziegus in Holst Road in Amherst. I urge you to continue your support for the Jones project. So many years in the making, the Jones has endured many challenges because it makes sense for our community, for users of all ages, abilities, and identities, many of whom traditionally have little voice in public spheres like this one, to provide a vital place for learning and connecting. It makes sense for the environment to invest in resilient systems and materials. It makes sense for this historic structure to renovate with care and attention to preserving the building's features. It makes sense fiscally, too. It will cost the town $15.8 million to make it possible, not a small sum. But we also know that the cost of not pursuing this plan will be just as expensive, and the result won't be nearly as transformative. We'll fix the leaks, but we won't have a bright, fully accessible, all-ages, sustainable community hub. The move to withdraw the town's authorization to borrow at this critical time is premature. The town's share of the funds can't be used for teacher salaries. The library's board has always been committed to the necessary fundraising, and the town manager is responsible for carefully reviewing the contract prior to signing. We've held off on making our donation until the project is officially going forward, but we will contribute once the contract is signed, and we suspect that this is the case for many of our neighbors. The town has to spend money to take care of its people and resources. Please agree to spend with our best possible future in mind.
Thank you for joining us, Erica. Rebecca Nordstrom, please.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Nordstrom. I live on Dana Street in District 3. And I want to also urge the town council to allow the renovation and expansion project to move forward as planned. These are, to be sure, turbulent times, but I really believe that we should stay the course. The funding is in place. The trustees have agreed to cover any shortfall should they occur. I have personally pledged financial support for this project, and I look forward to continuing to make good on my pledges, and I've heard many others tonight say the same thing. I also just want to extend my thanks to all of you who have worked so very hard on this project. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. John, please enter the room. State your full name.
Hello, my name is John Hosse. I live on Triangle Street and District 5A. In having listened, oh, I'm calling to pledge my unequivocal support for the renovation and hope that you vote this motion down. In listening to the presentation on the fiscal concerns, it's clear that they were each addressed sometimes a couple of times. And as the esteemed counselor from my district pointed out, this is an ethical issue. At the beginning of this meeting, you touted the accessibility of the meeting to ensure that all residents could participate. Yet, we're discussing a movement to stop renovations to a library, another public space which is not accessible to all residents. You know, in addition, our lovely town hall has a great display on how immigrants are welcome and accessibility of red cards. But what message does it send if we're voting to cancel some of the public spaces that they rely on to learn the language, to access the internet, which they need to apply for jobs, which they need to apply for services? So thank you all very much for your time, for your patience with these processes, and please continue with this project.
Thank you for joining us. Eric Crowley?
Hello, this is Eric Crowley. I am on Station Road in District 5. I'm also talking in support with my neighbors in favor of the library. We want to continue with this project. It is an extraordinary project that has come together. All of the different funding that has been put together to make this happen is truly amazing that the team has put together through all of the years and all the trials and all of the what about, oh, what about this, or what about that? Let the town manager do his job. He's very fiscally responsible. He's done the work, and he would stop it if it was not going to make any sense. So let's get it done. Let's do the will of the people that you were elected to represent and go forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Eric. David Ratner, please enter the room. And make sure you unmute. David, you need to-
Yes, I believe possibly with an echo. David Ratner, Lincoln Avenue, District 4. Thank you for your hard work, for the thoughtful questions that councilors have asked. I would like to urge you to continue to support this project, to vote down the motion to rescind. My wife and I have made a contribution already. I think it's the largest contribution we've ever given to a charitable organization. And despite the uncertainty of the times, if this project is allowed to go forward, we would give an additional contribution. So I just hope very much that you continue to support the library. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Anika Lopes, please enter the room.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I want to express my support for the Arts and Humanities, which we all know are currently facing significant challenges, threats, and attempts at erasure nationwide. And also the library projects to inclusion and accessibility. In light of national concerns, audacity, and uncertainties, I want to recognize the residents of Amherst and beyond who depend on free services and spaces offered by the library, such as English as a second language programs, actually third, as English is not the first language of this land. But there is no shortage of threats to these services or to those that bring forward a true inclusive version of American history. Could the current administration come for the project's grants? Yes, but I do not believe we need to assist them. The Civil War tablets and programming in the space that will hold them represent much more than a simple monument to the Civil War soldiers. What makes the tablets and the space unique is that they will acknowledge the contributions of Black and Afro-Indigenous residents of Amherst who served in the war. of Black and Afro-Indigenous residents of Amherst who served in the war, a rarity for that time. This aspect of history is one of the most obscured and lesser-known narratives of Amherst erased in plain sight. As of 2025, they remain the only town monument to recognize the town's Black and Afro-Indigenous roots, which is unfortunate as we predate the town. This is one of the many reasons it would be fantastic to expand the special collections and revitalize the archives with a more accurate account of the Black and Indigenous history of this community. It should not be pacified as if an outside enclosure with twenty-four-seven access will have the same impact. I'm a generational resident. I do not have memories before the Jones Library, and none of them, including the wood, involve seeing anyone who looked like me on the walls. I have deep respect for historic preservation, but in my humble opinion, the opportunity to make space for, to connect this history to our present and future, is invaluable.
Anika, thank you. Margaret Sawyer, please enter the room.
Hi, thank you so much for having this meeting tonight. It's really exciting to me to have all of us sharing our thoughts here. I wrote a letter to, and a lot of the points tonight are great, but I think we really could think about this as something we need right now. I think with the coming cuts, we're going to see a lot fewer warm places where people can be in the winter that are welcoming to them. We're going to see a lot fewer cool places in the summer. There won't be, it's possible that after-school programs will be cut, that having a safe, welcoming space for kids, older people, for vulnerable populations is going to be more important. So I do want us to fund the library. I also put a lot of trust in you all to make this decision, and I see that it's a hard one. Like Katie said, it would be wonderful to have a contingency plan if these grants were gone. I also want to say that over the years, I've been frustrated by this project because it often has seemed like it's really shooting for the moon, like it's trying to be perfectly net zero, perfectly historically preserving, and also, while also not thinking enough about being affordable. That's a frustration I've had for a long, long time. And I really feel frustrated at the Massachusetts Historical Commission for tacking back on the slate roof and the wood paneling after you all made a good choice to let that go. I also think that right now might be the time to take the money and run, that this is our chance. And finally, I want you to be really careful when you think about cutting school budgets because the schools, it looks the same. It looks like the same pots of money to us and the same fears that make us cut schools.
Thank you for joining us. Maria Kapiki.
Thank you, Maria Kapiki, South Amherst. So I have had a chance to read over the materials that were just added into the packet this afternoon. I hope that you all did too, and you reviewed them carefully. And after reading them and seeing what's been going on for a very long time with this project, it's clear that you guys are living in a different world than the rest of us. This is a world where the endowments don't decrease, according to you. They're not going to decrease in this setting. Tariffs, supply chain interruptions, escalations, just regular escalations, canceled grants, are apparently not going to impact this project. Loans are going to be given no matter what. Contingencies that start at ten percent for a complicated, one-hundred-year-old building on a complicated site is going to be sufficient, and it's going to decrease, even by your numbers, to less than eight percent, to less than three million dollars before you even get started. You have fundraising that you're saying, this is great. We only need to get eight million dollars. We're going to get the four million, and four million we're going to borrow. That eight million dollars is two million more than you owed in twenty-twenty-one, and that's not counting the expenses. Your eighty-seven percent that you're so proud of that you're at has been stalled there for years. I appreciate Attorney Goldberg's candor for finally saying that if this goes over forty-six million dollars, you, the town, are going to be paying for it. We, the town, are going to be paying for it. If the library can't find the money, it's on the town. So you need to show the effect of going over that amount. You have to show the effect of what if the town is not going to pay fifteen point eight, which it will not have to pay. It'll be more than that. What if it's twenty? What if it's twenty-five? What if it's thirty? And the general contractors are happy to sign a contract because any overages are on us, not on them. They get a contract, and they get all the extra money that it's going to cost.
Thank you. Peter Gray-Mullin, please enter the room.
Good evening. Peter Gray-Mullin, District One. Thank you, counselors, and all of you that are working on the Jones Library Project. I speak in support of the Jones Library Project moving forward, and I ask that the counselors vote against the motion this evening. I work for the UMass Building Authority, which is similar to MBLC. I have twenty projects in design or construction right now. I understand these projects. The Jones Library Project has been thoroughly evaluated to reduce risk. The budget wisely carries an eight percent contingency, and this is in line with my projects at the same stage of award that the Jones Project is at. I reassure you, it's a good budget. I want to add that you have a very good contractor with Fontaine Brothers. I work with them now, have in the past, and you should have a high confidence that you are going to be working with a good partner. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Peter. Anne Holm, please enter the room.
I have been following the news, and what I haven't found is there is nothing available about the annual budget for this new project. How is the new library going to cover all the expenses inside the building? The current building is in great need of repairs, maintenance, upkeep, painting, flooring, carpeting, windows, bathrooms have been neglected for years. I have been told there are not sufficient funds because of the decisions of the trustee about the endowment. So every year, the building and staffing needs are not addressed. How is this going to change with not only an upgraded building, but with a new addition? I would like to know how the new expanded library will be staffed, furnished, maintained. Do the numbers include new comfortable furniture, curtains, patron resources, all the things that are inside the walls? I would like to know if an annual operating budget is being developed that reflects the greatly increased expenses of staffing, patron resources, maintenance, utilities, the items that are not one-time expenses, but weekly, monthly, and annual. Finally, I think there should be a town referendum for taxpayers to vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Johanna Newman, please enter the room.
Thank you very much. Johanna Newman, one thirty-seven Stanley Street in District Two. I'm here tonight to say that I support the library project, and I urge you not to rescind the prior motion. Instead, I hope that you will respect the voters and the process and the twelve years of planning that have brought us to this moment. Thank you very much for your service and for the opportunity to comment today.
Thank you for joining us. Sandy Musprat, please enter the room.
Sandy Musprat, North Prospect Street. I thank the councils, all counselors for their work, but particularly the three who petitioned for a special meeting. I believe you should rescind the authorization for the library. From the very beginning, has been unnecessarily ambitious. And now with various curtailments on expenses, it does not meet even the best ambitions of the original project. It's remarkable how many people wish to throw good money after bad. And I note that the legal advice says the town is on the hook. The nature of the relationship between the library and a government organization, it's a quango, a quasi-autonomous, non-governmental organization. We and the town and the taxpayers are on the hook. We have much greater priorities, particularly schools. I love the library. It's a good library. I go there frequently. I support it annually. I do not support this project. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Kathy Axelson Berry, please enter the room.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you very much. I do not support the ongoing expenditures for the library, and I urge you not to have the town manager sign contracts, and I hope that you will rescind the authorization for borrowing. This is not about liking libraries or not liking libraries. It's not about the importance of English as a Second Language. It's not important about how wonderful, it's not about the staff and how wonderful they are. It's about this particular building project. And I think people seem to be getting this very confused and thinking that if you like libraries, then you have to vote for this particular building project, this library. But as Lauren, the lawyer, said, the town lawyer said, the town is not only on the hook for the fifteen point eight million dollars, and the trustees must cover the rest of the expenditure overage. But if the library doesn't cover that, the town is also on the hook for the entire amount. And I think Paul Bachmann said, well, the town could try to get the library to pay. And he also said that there would be no increase in taxes as a result of this library because seven million dollars would come from the endowment. But, and the rest would be in the town budget. Well, that means that other things that are in the town budget would not be covered because their needs would be neglected, like education, because it would be covering the overage of the cost of the library. It's also been said that town council has prioritized it for many years, at least nine years, and therefore, we should go ahead with it. But I...
Katie, thank you for joining us.
Okay.
Lauren Mills, please enter the room. Lauren, you need to unmute. Lauren, can you please unmute?
I sent a prompt to unmute. We can come back?
We'll come back to her. Arlie, please enter the room.
Hello, this is Arlie Gould, South Amherst. A lot of the people in favor keep saying that the project for the town is fifteen point eight million. But in Mr. Bachmann's presentation and others have said, the CPA funds are also taxpayer, so that's sixteen point eight million. And then there's the nine million interest on the forty-six point one million dollar loan. So that comes up to about twenty-five point eight million. That's what actually, at this point, with the forty-six point one million cap, that the town is actually paying. But as the attorney said, and Bob Pam's public comment that he submitted, it was reprinted in the Indy, kind of says, is, you know, essentially, the town is borrowing all the money and is basically on the hook for the whole project and is getting reimbursed by the library or by the MBLC grants. So that's actually how it's working. So, you know, let's not get confused about that. And then, it's funny to hear, you know, the Jones Library is not going to disappear if we don't do this project. It sounds, everybody is speaking as if if we don't do this project, somehow the Jones Library just goes poof and disappears, you know? And all this programming that is so wonderful that Mr. Serat talked about and many people, you know, and public commented, can be done in other places, in other spaces. There's two other libraries in this town. The new elementary school building is going to have community space. You know, Wildwood will be empty. I know it needs work.
Thank you for joining us, Arlie.
Thank you.
Allegra Hawke. Please go ahead.
I'm from District Five. I drive by the scaffolding of the new elementary school every day with the same mixed feelings. Although my own kids missed out on the opportunity to attend, I'm excited for the kids who will. And yet, I also experience sadness that the school project, like so many others in our town, is tainted by its history of bickering and infighting. The irony is that I believe our community values children in education as well as access to knowledge and information in community spaces. Yet here we are again, mired in the library project. The Fort River motto proudly displayed on students' T-shirts is the bold statement, "We choose love." How do we, as a community, in practice, demonstrate this to our children? Some might say that an established aspect of love includes believing the best about others. It involves trust. I'm not speaking tonight because I'm an expert on the library project. I don't think this is required. I have read the seemingly disparate information coming from both sides, and I won't hesitate to say that Farah Mead, a volunteer library trustee, is my dear friend. I trust the research and the dedication of the library trustees, and I trust our town council to weigh the factors and make decisions that benefit our children and our community for the long haul. Our council members will not be perfect, but I had a voice in electing them. I also exercised my voice in front of this council months ago during the first round of public feedback sessions, and I was happy when, after much deliberation, the council made a decision. Another aspect of love is sacrifice. I do not want to live in a town known for its inefficiency due to bickering and stepping on one another. Could we be known instead as a community of people willing to lay down our rights to continually push back and instead support the very good, not perfect efforts of others, believing that we're in this together? If choosing to trust, to believe the best, is an aspect of love, then you may label me as naive, but I'd like to go on record saying that I, too, choose love.
Thank you for joining us. Ken Rosenthal, please enter the room.
Thank you, President Griezmer. Ken Rosenthal, Sunset Avenue. Many of us who love the Jones see two powerful reasons for supporting this cancellation. One, the design for this project is wrong, and two, the cost of repairs is manageable. Since this thirty percent increase in square footage was designed more than ten years ago, paper volumes in the Jones Library have decreased, in-person attendance has declined. We know that's because storage and access to information online is increasingly how we read. And to give just one example of wasteful design of space, consider the new room for the Civil War tablets. Hundred and thirty-two years ago, Amherst was given eight large granite tablets naming the three hundred white and black men from this area who fought in the Civil War on the side of the north. They've never been housed in the Jones before. They were expected to be kept outdoors, protected from the elements, and able to be visited at any time. But the Jones is closed about thirty-one days a year, those very days when visitors might like to come and honor their ancestors, like Memorial Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, the Sundays before... President's Day, the Sundays before those holidays, and even every summer Sunday. Closed. I know of much better places than Amherst for these wonderful granite tablets where they can always be visited. In the Friends Statement circulated the other day, they project the cost of repairs at twenty-one to twenty-three million dollars plus asbestos abatement, plus the cost escalation from 2023. The council, CPAC, and Amherst College are providing seventeen point eight million. The fundraisers expect about seven million more, and the Jones says it will add money from its endowment. All of that will pay for repairs, and the town will avoid the additional millions in interest on funds to be borrowed only for the proposed plan, but not at all for repairs, expenses that are rarely mentioned. If the fundraisers make the right case, an honest case for repairs, current owners will fulfill their pledges, and other supporters of the Jones, and I am one, will gladly contribute. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Ken. David Lithgow? Please unmute. There we go.
My name is David Lithgow. I'm an eighty-four-year-old retired government employee. I moved here with my wife, a retired nurse, in nineteen seventy-seven to establish a home on Hitching Post Road in District Two. We support the renovation expansion of the library. In doing my due diligence, I closely examined the information provided, I hope in good faith, by the minority activists that seek to abandon the library project. There are arguments to the contrary notwithstanding. We have contributed to date to fifteen thousand dollars towards a twenty-five thousand dollar pledge. We've suspended our installment donations for the last couple of years. As we sit on the end of the runway awaiting takeoff clearance, we fully intend to honor our pledge as soon as we get takeoff clearance and the construction contract is signed. It's apparent that there are many others like us ready to stand up to the extent that we can afford it to support this project. I will be deeply disappointed if, after the extraordinary efforts of so many over the last decade, a small activist minority succeeds in prevailing, and this project dies. I implore you to vote to go ahead with this project and see it through to its completion.
Thank you for joining us, David.
For your dedication to this wonderful community.
Lydia Vernon Jones, please enter the room.
Yes, here I am. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. I have not changed my mind about this project. I am, have been opposed to it for many years. I want to speak to the town councilors who have not been sitting on the council very long or maybe even present in town to track the history of this project. When I was sitting on the lawn, listening to the beginning of this meeting, I was looking at, at what my lawn, how my lawn has changed during climate change. And we live in a new world. We live in a new political world. We need, live in a new physical world. I'm remembering that the original trustees' plan, they had not asked the MBLC for extra money for, to have a more sustainable building. Environmental sustainability was not on their mind. Unfortunately, fortunately, that was an X-White Town meeting. I was optimistic when the ECAC was created, applied to be on the committee was not chosen. But unfortunately, that committee hasn't had any power in advising or directing the behavior of the town council on environmental issues. Also, unfortunately, the state attorney general has not yet weighed in on the legality of the limited Zoom model that we've been using for five years that not only handicaps people who are trying to organize, but also just doesn't give us a look at who our town is and what we want. So, and this evening, my heart is breaking for the Hitchcock Center and for all the programs that are being cut. And I'm just asking you to think about the new reality that we're living in and what we will need to spend money on, at least in the next four years, to make it possible for us to have the same quality of life in Amherst that we've been enjoying. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. Janet Keller, please enter the room. Did we lose Janet? No, there she is. Thank you. Please unmute.
How's that? Can you hear?
We can. Thank you. Something just happened again.
My connection is weak. Let me talk fast. Thanks to the council members and to the trustees for all the time and effort you give to the town. And I live in just District One. I love libraries. I worked in the Providence library system for seven years until I left to raise a family. I wish I could support this project, but I can't. I hope you will, members of the council will rescind the authorization for the demolition and expansion of the library. I am concerned that demolition and expansion of the library will not only make it more costly to build the library, but more costly to staff and maintain. What is the plan for funding the maintaining and staffing of the additional space? We don't know where the national and international economy will end up. I fear very much that national grants are at risk and that donors could well be adversely affected by the economic and political chaos throughout the country and the world. Please don't do this and put us at risk of having a project that will not survive economically. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Jason Dorni, please enter the room.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying we love the library. We use it often. However, I advocate for the rescinding of this, the borrowing authorization for this project. This project does not exist in a vacuum. DPW building project, as well as the fire station project that are anticipated to be built, would also require additional borrowing. The cost of borrowing money for this project, plus the DPW, the fire station, the new school, they're all going to cause the town to continue delaying other projects like general repairs, road maintenance, other capital improvement projects. It appears that the town has a habit of not addressing necessary repairs when they come up. We've been talking about this project for ten years, twelve years. We have a middle school roof that is literally falling on children's heads. Nobody seems to be talking about borrowing to fix that. And that project needed to happen a decade ago as well. That's an incredibly important project, and it's just been kicked down the road. We have a fifty million dollar backlog in road repairs. At some point, that backlog was maybe five million dollars. But people voted or the council voted, whomever, however it happened, it got way out of hand. And we're just continuing to borrow and borrow and borrow. Our town is not growing in any real appreciable amount. Our schools are crumbling. We're cutting, we're cutting positions in our schools, and then we're going to turn around and borrow a bunch of money that we're going to end up paying for and increase our already high property taxes. I think that this project is irresponsible. It was voted on years ago. If anything, that should move forward as a repair project. All of the great services that the library offers now will still exist. This library building is not going to fall to the ground if this doesn't
Thank you for joining us, Jason. Courtney, please state your full name. And I'm going to just, I'm not going to take anymore after we get to the people that are signed up. So please do not add your name. We are approaching the two hours, and we have plenty of other ways to provide comment. Courtney, please start.
Hi, my name is Courtney Cullen. I live on Pine Street next to the great pothole of Rosemary Street. I am here to urge the town council to rescind authorization for the library project. There are two points I would like to make. One, the current financial climate is incredibly unstable. There is no guarantee that the project will meet its funding goals or that the project will be able to move forward based on skyrocketing costs of materials. It would be incredibly irresponsible to condemn the taxpayers of Amherst to foot the bill when funding is not met or roadblocks inevitably come up. This will fall on top of the tax increases we are already paying for the new school. Our town needs to focus on its schools, paying its teachers, paras, and also addressing the crumbling infrastructure. Two, the library plans are still woefully ugly. There have already been material compromises to the project due to shifting costs such as using quote unquote "new materials" in lieu of wood. The proposed plans turn the Jones into a postmodern tomb, destroying the trees and surrounding grounds in order to create a very familiar box. You can see similar architecture just down the road in the high-rise student housings. I want to see a library that honors Amherst and its history with smart renovations and preservation. There are creative solutions that have not even begun to be explored. We are blessed to live in one of the most educated areas in the country, and you can't tell me that this is the best or most beautiful plan we could come up with. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Will Macon?
Hi. So I'm, I only recently became a president and part of why I decided to live here full time was the great community spaces like the Jones Library and also live in District One, I should say. But even though I love the community and the staff, it's clearly not, it clearly needs physical improvements made with a better serve everyone. And considering that the funding was already approved, I am strongly in favor of not rescinding the funding. I don't feel that fear due to political uncertainty is a good reason to stop such a valuable project and stop us from enjoying the lesson impact we get from it. I think for the amount of, the amount the town would actually be contributing would be a great investment for it. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Jeanne, please enter the room. State your full name.
Thank you. My name is Jen Chang. I live in District Four. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, good evening, town council. Thank you all for your dedication to this town. Tonight, I ask you to please consider this town's financial health and please stop this project from moving forward. I'm an educator, and I see how schools have been struggling to retain teachers and staff. We need to weigh our priority carefully. We do not need an oversized library. As an educator, I see firsthand how educators and young people acquire information and knowledge digitally at the palms of their hands. We use open educational resources through the web anytime, anywhere we happen to be, not necessarily in the library. We love the library, but not this oversized, overly ambitious one. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for joining us. Peggy Matthews Nielsen, please. Please unmute. There you go.
Hello, I'm Peggy Matthews Nielsen. I live on Teaberry Lane in District Five. I'm speaking tonight to urge town council to rescind the borrowing authorization for the Jones Library Building Project. I want to thank Councilor Shane Hegner and Taub for bringing the resolution forward. What makes the Jones Library Project so risky now is that it is not a renovation expansion, as it's called, but instead a demolition expansion. It is the demolition aspect that makes it so costly and so risky in this era of tariffs, rising costs, and unprecedented economic instability. Once you tear down a building into rubble, there's no turning back. Demolishing the library, the library's brick addition with a metal roof would place the town at risk for supply chain issues and escalating costs of materials for rebuilding. We all remember how the pandemic brought delays and shortages to towns across the country. Many towns are still recovering. There's no doubt that Trump's erratic economic policies will have a devastating impact on all construction costs. If the town boldly faces these new financial realities by pivoting to renovate the existing Jones Library building, we could pace the, we could, we could reapply for historic preservation tax credits that were lost in the demolition plan and avoid sending an estimated sixteen hundred tons of demolition debris to landfills. As our town councilors, you speak for Amherst residents, and you have the power to pursue a more reasonable plan B in these uncertain, indeed unprecedented, economic times.
Thank you for joining us, Peggy. Roger Edes?
Good evening. Roger Eads, we live on East Pleasant, near, in Northampton, Amherst. I have several things I want to say briefly. One is we unequivocally support this project, my partner and I. It has been well thought out. We have spent a great amount of time with Kent Farber, understanding the, the history of the project and all. We have a very large sum committed, and we will certainly come through. One of my complaints tonight that I want to voice is that, basically, I believe members of your council have defamed the public that is putting money into this project. You're acting like we're all going to bail, and we're not. And I'm really angry today over the fact that, A, we were, that defamation continues. You keep saying, oh, they won't come through. Well, we are coming through, and I'm sorry, but that's how it feels. Second is I feel totally disenfranchised by the decision to make this a closed-door meeting and not in person. Zoom is not the same. If it had required moving this, I see you, Kathy Grisner. Why are you laughing at me? I'm a taxpayer. I'm a taxpayer. And why were we disenfranchised? It would have been better to have too many people show up and put this meeting off for a week and put it in a room where all two hundred and fifty of us could have showed up. I am tired of the minority ruling in this country. That's why we have the Trump mess and why we have the MAGA problem and the economy. But this project is a chance for the town to get something done for thirteen million instead of fifty. And most of the opponents, I realize, have not listened to what Kent or Bob or Paul said about how the budget is. And the fact of the matter is, you're not stuck with the cost overruns, and you will never get a better deal than this. But I really can't believe that the town council here has, is so eager to throw voters out, and we should have been there in person tonight. I appreciate everybody's effort, but I notice that, again, the opponents just keep dragging this through the mud. Thank you for your efforts, people.
Thank you, Roger. We have a caller, six one nine number. Please state your full name.
Yes, hi, this is Lauren Mills. I hope you can hear me.
Lauren, I'm sorry, you've spoken already.
No, I haven't spoken.
Lauren, you didn't speak already. Thank you so much. Lauren, please go ahead.
Okay.
Using a different
I wanted to first say that I appreciate all the town members who are trying to make the library more comfortable. And growing up in Boston, my mom worked at the Boston Public Library, so I spent a lot of time in the library. But I also had an after-school program to go to, and my single parent mom also took us on vacation. And so in light of this meeting, I wanted to just share some of my thoughts about the library. the library, and what it has in common with schools. The library is a public space, as well as our schools. They are both places of education and self-discovery, and they are organized. And what is fair and what is right or equal cannot be always measured in dollars all the time. The library is a great place in many ways, but if I was a middle schooler or a high schooler, what I need in the form of support, mentoring, or self-discovery may not be found at the library. The schools also need the base support of the town manager that is given to the Jones Library, and the councilors, I hope, can find the amount that is needed in this situation to make sure that the library is functioning, and taking into consideration the programs it offers with service and the other places that provide those same services in the town. And I always wanted to, to hope that the libraries in our schools will be used more, because those are also places where children can access safe spaces to do their homework. And I just wanted to end with, I hope that the decision, oh, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, and thanks for calling back. The other caller, please enter the room and state your full name. Please unmute.
Yes, my name is Tom McRide, out of Amherst, District 5. I think we should consider our fellow members of the Commonwealth who would be paying for our library with their tax. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Peggy, we've already had you, and, I'm sorry. Pat, please enter the room. State your name and let us know who you are.
Good evening, everyone. I debated tonight whether or not for me to speak, but I decided to. As a businesswoman, you know, the whole issue of Jones Library, I look at from the perspective of who is the project benefiting, and I can list them. The Business Improvement District, the Chamber of Commerce, the MS Forward, the fundraisers, the contractors, and also, this is an election year, people who want to get re-elected. I also want to comment on white folks speaking for my community, the BIPOC, and black folks. Jones Library is not a welcoming place for everyone. And so people have to be very careful when they say they're doing it for immigrants, for black people, for homeless people. Be careful when you say that, because you are offending some of the residents of this town. And while I don't always agree with some of the town councilors, but the real heroes tonight are the three councilors who made this meeting possible. I respect you. It took a lot of courage to do this, and that's what you're supposed to do. You were elected to do this type of thing, to allow more conversation. I do not support moving forward with this project, because it will be done on the backs of marginalized people. See what happens with the upper funds. The rich got the money on the, on the backs of poor people. Thank you.
Pat, thank you for joining us. That concludes public comment. So we are now at the point of whether any other further council comments or discussion from councilors or trustees. I'm sorry, I need to get back over here. Kathy?
Yes, I, I would like to make it clear to everyone that Bob, Jennifer, and I took the dramatic step of calling for this special meeting out of our commitment to fiduciary responsibility to the town, and a concern that we were not getting answers to basic cost questions as the deadline for signing a contract approached. These questions included, what is the total cost of the project? Will the subcontractors and the general contractor commit to the bids they made last fall? Knowing what's going on around us, we weren't sure they would commit, and needed to know that answer. Is it still in the 46 million? Second, will Amherst get the 2.1 million in federal grants, one from HUD and NEH? Do we have any assurances in writing, recent conversations, given what we're reading about the situation at the federal level? And third, what's the current gap in trustee fundraising? How do they propose to pay the town the full amount of their share without draining the endowment fund? We are also committed to the survival of the library, and we know how much you need the endowment fund for that, that survival. We were told that having voted, and I voted in 2023 for this project, worried about the risks, but at that point, I thought there were still historic tax credits that would help close that gap, and those disappeared. I was always worried about the risks. We were told that we didn't have a role anymore, having voted that. And that potentially, the only reason, way to spark this conversation was to call for a rescission. And that was literally the information. So we, we acted on that to have the conversation we've just had tonight. And I must say, at 1:30 this afternoon, when we got a very long Q and A, Q and A from Paul, that I want to thank the staff and Paul, who worked really hard last week to get us answers to the questions that we didn't have on Monday night. That wasn't that long ago. So I really appreciate it. We, we got very good news, or some good news, that the general contractor will adhere to their commitment, and only two subcontractors will not, but the next highest or the next lowest, at least one of them has said they will, and it looks like that cost difference is only about 270, and we still have to bid this late roof, which leaves us with 3 million in contingency. And as of a week ago, I wasn't sure we had any contingency left, if all the bids were higher. So that was led to this special meeting, and I think I applaud the trustees for coming in to try and do a good job in answering, how are you going to pay for the gap if you're not there two years from now? And I, I think the plan may work, and let's hope the endowment holds and doesn't get swamped, because the town will be at risk, and what I'm hearing is we're going to hold this risk for 7 to 9 to 10 million dollars for the next three years in terms of what you've already raised as the rest of the money comes in. And this is real money to the town. I'm sitting, looking at budgets and what debt we've already incurred for other projects, and watching it squeeze out needs of other places. So this was not ever meant to be a vote against the project per se. It was against the financial risks that the, the project was posing for the town, the taxpayers, and the library. So I am very encouraged by what I think is some good news. I do think it's still a very high-risk project. We're at 8.5% contingency, which on a project that has a renovation as well as a new, as opposed to just a new project, is, is not as robust as you would want it to be. So we'll have to watch every day what's going on out in the field. But I just want to try to explain to people that the concern here was money. It was not a one way or the other way. It was worrying that we were ignoring the fact that the delays, the most recent delays were all around Section 106, which was an effort to secure the federal grants. That probably should have started two years ago, before the bidding happened, and then we wouldn't have had to wait the extra amount of time when the bids came in. But that's yesterday's story, and it looks like you've put that to rest. So I was very pleased to get the news today at 1:30, which was not very long before this meeting, and I'll turn it over to Bob.
Okay, I'll skip to Bob, although Freck is next.
Jen called the meeting, and we actually thought we would have a presentation and be able to say something before this started, which I appreciate the way the meeting went. I think it was healthier to get all the news that Paul had gathered. I must say that.
All right, I'm going to go to Bob Hegner.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
What's, what a five-minute recess.
You want a five-minute recess? Okay, that's perfectly appropriate. We are going to take a five-minute recess. Bob, we'll pick up with you as soon as we come back. It is 9:46. We're going to reconvene at 9:51. It's time to reassemble, gang. Please have your seats. So Bob, are we ready? Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Again, I want to, first of all, thank the town manager and staff for working so diligently on behalf of the town to ensure this project remains on, within budget, and to provide the information that we didn't have last week. And I apologize to people for calling this meeting, because had we had this information last week, I probably wouldn't have voted to call this meeting. The information provided by the town manager today answers the two questions that I had, the two fundamental questions I had. How much will the project cost, and who will pay for it? And I think with some, with some uncertainty, I think we've answered that. I do have some concerns, however. As Kathy mentioned, the contingency is very low for a project that involves demolition, especially given the potential impacts of tariffs, inflation, supply chain issues, recession, et cetera. So the town and the trust, and the trustees really must ensure that the total cost remains within the budget. And, you know, Paul has indicated that if we're going over budget, we have to, the town council will need to authorize that. Risks still remain with the project, and we, we know what they are. They're, you know, same supply chain issues, tariffs, inflation. But they would also come with the repair option. And so we're not really solving any problem by, by sticking our heads in the sand. You know, we just have to deal with these-ish risks as they, as they come up. But I also will note that the town still faces considerable challenges. The new DPW facility, which is falling apart, the, the fire EMS station, which will follow shortly, our roads, which everyone knows need repair badly, building repairs, school operations, and, you know, layoffs that have been announced because of, of revenue shortfalls. So let's, let's try to set our acrimony over the library in the past, and let's focus on the problems that are facing the town as we go forward. I think we, if we, you know, we can use the energy that the members of the public brought to tonight, and use the energy that, that we have in this group to really focus on, let's try tonight and use the energy that we have in this group to really focus on, let's try to find solutions to the problems of tomorrow and not fight the battles of yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Jennifer, you with the third person on, okay, then I'll go to Pam.
Thank you. Thank you. Many people have spoken to some of my concerns. I do know that the decision that we make tonight is complex. The town manager, Paul Bauchaman, has been very clear that he's advancing step by step through the project because that's the direction we have provided him in our votes. And my feeling is, I appreciated the information. I am still of the feeling that it's in the best interest of the taxpayer, the town, and just performance of good government to change that direction and vote against advancing this particular library expansion project any further. We're seeing, we are in a time of extreme change. Many people have mentioned this. People's livelihoods that I know are actually being directly affected. Federal money is in jeopardy and the construction costs are changeable. So what I don't want is the library to become an albatross around our neck despite everyone's best efforts. As a counselor, I hear repeatedly that we need better funding for the priorities of schools, fires, roads, police. And we already face those funding concerns for the town operations. And each of those has its own unmet needs that are very real. I mentioned earlier the DPW building with leaks and mold. I would like to see that the employees that work there, who have been waiting patiently for a new building, get the building they need. To me, that is a crisis. It is different than something that we would, a vision that we would like to carry. My gut feeling is that the cost of the library addition is still uncertain enough to commit further and we should pull back. So the prudent thing to do is not to advance the library and therefore urge my colleagues to vote for a rescission tonight to send a clearer message on the direction we should go. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Okay, so I bridged what I thought I would be, I had prepared for at the beginning of the meeting. So echoing what Bob and Kathy said, the call for this meeting, I do feel has served a constructive purpose that answers to questions that many of us have been seeking, you know, were provided. And while I appreciate having this meeting and having the information, I wish it hadn't taken the call for a special meeting to make that happen. And without this meeting, the council would only have learned after the fact, after the construction contract was signed, the amount in terms of a binding agreement that will commit us a huge chunk of the town's resources and impact our financial decisions for a long time to come. So though many of us have different positions on the library, one thing on which we all agree is that the Jones is vitally important to downtown and to our community as a whole. From the moment I moved to Amherst, every time I walk by the Jones, I pinch myself, really, that I live in a town with such a beautiful, charming, historic library. Of course, the building is in dire need of repair and maintenance, but I've always felt that the Jones can remain a treasured community space within its current square footage. We are a community of roughly 13,000 non-student residents with the college and university students overwhelmingly using the libraries on their campus. I know that many think, there are many who think that the time could not be more fitting to undertake this project, but I must respectfully disagree. I was recently struck that a member of the Capitol campaign acknowledged that the total needed from the independent fundraising now exceeds almost three times the amount raised in any previous Capitol campaign in Amherst and that it uncomfortably stretches the limit of what we think is possible. That was someone that's involved in the fundraising. In the best of economic times, raising $7 million from community donations was always going to be a monumental lift. In an economic downturn, it could well be not possible. I don't think in this time of economic upheaval, when we're on the brink of what could be a full-fledged recession, that this is the time to take on a project that, in my assessment, is a risky financial undertaking for the town. I know I'm likely not to be on the prevailing side of this vote, but I will be supporting the motion to rescind from the conviction that we can repair the Jones as our budget and other community resources and even, yes, fundraising allows. I would like to see us direct more funds sooner than we otherwise could to repairing our roads and schools and to building a new DPW and fire station, facilities that we desperately need and are also in dire need of repair and also replacement. So finally, I just feel compelled to respond to those who I feel have maligned and mischaracterized many of my constituents as a handful of naysayers and malcontents. As you know and can, the audience can imagine, this meeting has generated a great many emails to the council. Correspondence received is just about evenly divided, divided on the pro and con on the motion to rescind, excuse me, to dismiss and minimalize as those few obstructionist residents and neighbors who hold positions different from one's own ill serves our community. As we move forward, I hope we can strive to conduct ourselves with the faith that we're all acting in good faith. Thank you.
Bob, you still have your hand up? Okay. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, Counselor Walker, you have your hand up?
Thank you, Lynn. I've spent most of this meeting just listening because I am really grateful that this was an opportunity for me to hear a lot of different voices in our town. I think we've seen a lot of people come out for public comment and email the council that we haven't heard from before. And I really appreciate that kind of engagement with residents and constituents. And so I did want to take this time to really listen to what people have had to say. And I've been struggling to figure out what I want to say and what kinds of questions I want to ask because I do have so many. And while some of them were answered by the document that was provided to us, some of them were not. And so I just wanted to share my honest feelings about where I am right now. I'm feeling very conflicted because I honestly just feel like a lot of what has happened tonight has felt very performative to me. I inherited this project as a counselor. When I came in, there were already people working on this. There was already so much work and planning that had gone into this project. And so, of course, I would love to have a renovated and expanded library. I have three children who I would love to be able to bring to a library to have additional space, to have additional programming. And the reality for me is that I've been concerned about this project from the beginning because of its financial implications, even when the original estimates were almost $10 million below what they are now. And so considering, you know, what I've learned and what I've heard tonight and considering what I have learned and what I'm doing right now in grad school, I conclude that these concerns are still very real. And I feel disappointed to see that my original concerns remain a real reality and that we are in this position where I feel like we're caught between a rock and a hard place, where there isn't a clear, good answer. I think we can all agree that we want to see the Jones Library be safe, vibrant, inclusive space. And I feel really sad about the rhetoric that comes with these kinds of highly political decisions because it makes it more difficult to understand that we probably all have the same goal here and we just might not agree on how to get there. But I also hope that everyone understands that these kinds of decisions are subjective and that positionality and perspective will play a part in how you view this issue. I come from a low-income, single-parent household where I was raised by my mother, who sometimes we had to rotate bills and that was a necessity we needed to do to survive. And I feel as though we're in this type position as a town right now financially. We are having these discussions at all corners of our budget and expenditures. We are in a place where we are making tough decisions on what type of things we are cutting, what types of programs and services we are saving, and it just feels amiss right now. I feel like there are still some questions that have not been answered, like what is this project going to cost us fully? I feel like we have been looking at this in bits and pieces. We have the contract, we have the change orders, we have the interest. There's just so many different things. And so what is this going to cost us and at what cost? I feel like we're just not really talking about the reality of the position we are existing in in time. And I know that, I would love to say that this is the best time to be investing in a library as a service, as education is under attack, as we are seeing books being banned. And I would love to say that that's the reality, but we're talking about so much money and so many other services and positions and other capital needs that are not being met right now. And I just feel like we are looking at this project in a vacuum. And it feels really hard to be making good decisions when I feel like we aren't having the real, honest conversation. So I do thank everyone for coming out tonight. I thank everyone for the hard work they have put into this project for many years because I do, I feel sad right now. I feel sad that everyone put so much hard work into this project and that it still doesn't feel like the best decision for our town. But I do appreciate everyone's time tonight. And I do appreciate the counselors for calling this meeting because I think this is very imperative that we have this conversation and that we have this conversation publicly and including our constituents.
Andy?
Yeah, I want to start by thanking the trustees, the fundraising volunteers and staff, and all those who have put so much into making this project move to the point where we're at now and hopefully to go forward. A comment was just made about how long this project has been going on. And I have to admit that having been active in town government for probably too long now, I was in on this at the beginning. And that beginning was like 13 years ago when this chair of the Finance Committee, Stephanie O'Keefe, is chair of the Select Board, and I were asked to come and sign a form supporting an initial grant to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners for money to develop an initial assessment and program. And so I have watched this program and been involved with this program throughout my period in the Finance Committee and the Select Board and on the council. There's been a comment made about the need for all four of the projects and the assertion has been made, and I'm not, and I think I agree with it, that the need, the DPW building may be greater. But I do also have to recognize that the order that we ended up with, with the four projects who were originally identified, came because of grant opportunity and not because of what is the worst building. And when MBLC had a grant process, they had a very strict timeline and they don't start new grant process until they have completed all of the projects that they've agreed to fund in the prior process. So when they set up the project, it was similar to the MBLC and the school project. We just had to accept that the grantor that was going to provide money that would make this possible dictated that we go forward. And that is still true today because MBLC has made it clear that if we turn this down now, that we cannot come back for 30 years. And that's a long time that we would have to go without that kind of support to make this possible. So I guess that the other thing that I just want to say is that I think that the other thing that we've heard loud and clear in the information that we've been given is that the cost of saying no to the project going forward is equal to or greater than the cost of saying yes to continuing the project from the town perspective because the repairs would fall more heavily on the town. And we've already talked about that being more expensive than the town commitment by far. So with that in mind, I am going to be voting against any motion to change the course that we have set forward. And again, thank you to all that have put so much commitment into making this possible to get to this stage.
Is there a motion? The motion, there's a motion on the motion sheet.
Is this how I should read it? The motion that's on?
Yes.
That's on the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
The one that's on the motion sheet. It's in the packet.
It's in the...
Thank you.
I have to say, when I went to the webpage for the council, it wasn't clear that there was a packet.
I'll check that out. It was in our packet.
Yes. Anyway, some other counselors have said the same thing. So I move to rescind appropriation and borrowing order FY21-06C, an order that approved and authorized bond authorization for $36,279,000, and to rescind the 2023 supplemental appropriation for the expansion and renovation of the Jones Library, said some to supplement the amount appropriated under the Town Council's April 5, 2021, order approving and authorizing borrowing of funds for the expansion and renovation of the Jones Library, $9,860,100.
Is there a second?
Second, Rooney.
Okay. Do you feel at this point you have any further thing you would like to say to speak to the motion? Okay. Then the floor is open for discussion among counselors. Counselor Hanke.
A century ago, the Jones Library trustees envisioned a library that would be more than just a warehouse for books. The building would look and feel like a home. It would welcome and support residents' desire to learn, not just from books, but from each other. The building would welcome performers and speakers. It would be not just a building for learning, but a building for community. And nearly 100 years later, the vision is still alive. It's a place where our residents go to learn, to relax, to socialize, and to become part of our community. It is our living room, office, library, and arts, culture, and performance space. A place to find books, to learn a new language in a new country, to meet other parents and children, a place to spend a day out of the cold or the heat, to keep isolation at bay, to study, work on group projects, or just hang out with friends. It's a place to search for and apply for a job, benefits, or college, and to experience culture without needing to spend money. The Jones is a second home for all our residents, but after 100 years, the actuality of this vision has outgrown the home and the library needs upgraded and expanded to meet changing times and uses. The library trustees have backstopped their share. They were elected to make that financial decision. It is not for us as a council to usurp their job on the matter. The MOU secures their share, and I trust that they may... The MOU secures their share, and I trust that they made that decision in a considered and responsible manner. The manager is tasked with signing the contract. He has his own fiduciary duties, and I trust that he will only sign it if he believes the project will be completed within the borrowing authority and if the town's portion will stay as agreed. Yes, we don't have perfect information, but that's because it's not our job to negotiate the contract. It's the manager's job, and I trust him. I trust that the bidders took into consideration the possibility of tariffs and more when they submitted their bids, since what is happening now is not a surprise to anyone who was paying attention last fall. And I trust that when those same bidders say they can still meet their bid, that they can. The cost of rescinding this bond is worse than any uncertainty that current project has. Repair will be well over sixteen million. The town's share will be above sixteen million. Getting to a finished project will take even longer, and it will be more disruptive to the library. And the legal jeopardy we would put our town in if we rescind is unacceptable. I trust that the costs of rescinding the already authorized borrowing are far worse for our town than moving forward with the current project. Tonight will be at least my eighth vote on this project. It has been eleven years since the first vote. These are challenging times, but the town's share is affordable. Libraries are bastions of democracy, community, knowledge, and equity. We need them more than ever. I will be voting no on the motion to rescind. It is the fiscally responsible thing to do.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we're going to move to a vote. If you vote in favor, you are voting to rescind, which in effect kills the project. Pat DeAngelis.
Nay.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Nay.
Counselor Ete.
No.
Lynn Griesmer is nay. Counselor Hanke.
No.
Bob Hegner.
No.
Counselor Lord.
She's been absent all night.
I'm sorry. Thank you. And I didn't know whether she'd make it by now. Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Nay.
Kathy Shane.
No.
Andy Steinberg.
No.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
The motion fails. There were three people in favor of the motion. There are nine people, no, I'm sorry. There's three people in favor of the motion. There's nine people against the motion and one absent. Before we adjourn, I want to say that as much as maybe some people didn't want to come out tonight, a lot of people did. And as much as when we first got this recommend, this request for the meeting, it's the first time I've ever had a counselor or a group of councilors feel they needed to request one. I'm not sorry they did. It's given us an opportunity to provide for the public the very, very insight into this project that I think they needed. And I want to thank town manager and his staff for all the work that you put into this. I want to thank our two legislators, our three legislators, both Mindy Dom and Joe Comerford for the extra effort they've made to bring more money into this project. And I want to thank the congressman, the governor, and his staff, who just this last week were tracking down grants in a very difficult environment. But most of all, I want to thank the trustees and your fundraisers. I think you'll do it. I know you will. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. We take a roll call. Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ete.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Absent.
Absent, thank you.
We're getting good.
Pam Rooney.
Here, I mean.
All right.
She is here.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Okay, before I adjourn us, Austin, would you please adjourn the trustees?
No. I want to say something.
Okay.
What I want to say is, I want to say that democracy is messy. It's hard. It's hard to walk across a room when you walk into it with people who have opposed you and will oppose you and shake their hands. More of that ought to be done. I regret that it is not done. But each one of us needs to set an example. The example that's been set here, I think is a good one. Even though many of us annoy each other and we show it, that's too bad, but we're human. Democracy is messy and it's hard. It takes patience. It takes finding the good in someone else, even when they annoy you because they make you go through the same thing time and time again. When I was in this room twelve years ago or thirteen years ago and was asked, why did I want to be on the Jones Library Board of Trustees? I said, because I love the town and I love the library. I corrected you, not because I don't respect you. We are not advocates for a project. We never have been. And that's unfair to us. We're advocates for the town. And we have a vision which is different from yours. But it's not about a project. It's about the town. Saying thank you is politeness. It is not gratitude. Gratitude is shown when people show up to do something hard. That's gratitude. Kent Furburgh, Ginny Hamilton, Lee Edwards have done more than anybody could have asked them to do to raise funds for this town. The trustees could have said no to all of your requests for information. We are not just a town body. So we hope going forward that the next time we come into a room with people who oppose us, the first thing we'll do is we'll shake their hands. Motion to adjourn. Lee Edwards. Lee Lee. What's your name? We're adjourned.
And the council is adjourned. Good evening.